That's believable.
What is she checking up on you?
I guess. Okay. A motion to approve said easement, subject to review by our town solicitor. We have a motion and a second. Oh, we gotta wait for Terry? Sorry, I thought she was on.
We've got to seal the--
After we make a motion.
Okay, I'm back.
You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve said easement, subject to review by our town solicitor. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two dash forty-six dash seven of the RIDO laws.
We have a motion and a second. It's sealed, executive session minutes. All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Okay. We're going right in, right? Okay. I would-- I would like to just, just take a minute to-- to have a-- first, let me welcome-- future councillor Chris Logan. We'll make those appointments here shortly, but I just want to welcome you and thank you for being, being part of this team.
Thank you, Paul.
And I'd like to welcome-- our police chief, who is acting town administrator-- in, in light of-- the events that happened to the Brown family. And I would just ask for a moment of silence for the Brown family and Lombardi family, please.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so let's get right, it's right into it. Number two, memorandum of town clerk in reference to appointment of town council member.
Motion to receive said memorandum, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You're right, you're all set? Okay. What's that? Okay, yes, please. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christopher M. Logan as town councillor for a term expiring November twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Chris, welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I do.
All right, congratulations. All right. You want to, Chris, you want to say anything, or am I putting--
I do.
You do.
I want to say something.
Have at it.
Let's get to work. Let's get to work.
All right.
That's efficient.
All right. Excellent. Number three, memorandum of town administrator in reference to selection of town council president.
Motion to receive said memorandum and make a motion to elect Paul--
I, I think we gotta do one at a time.
That's what I'm doing. Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive said memorandum. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And make a motion to appoint Paul Rodriguez as our president of the town council. Second.
I make a-- this is nominations, correct, Mr. Vice President?
I can't hear you, Terry.
This is for nominations, correct, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to nominate councillor Toronto for president, council president?
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. So there's two names of-- placed in the nomination. Wendy, we just take them in order?
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
If there were any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Just councillor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And, you know, I, I support Paul for president. He's done it before. He, he's got the experience to pivot on procedure or draw on previous conversation of issues, and that allows the council to get up to speed quickly. Like, as we have seen in the last couple of meetings, it's been very smooth. But, you know, I've nominated Paul to be president twice before, in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty. And Paul's refused the nominations because his lack of time availability has been a constant issue over the course of those years. So I know you're busy, Paul. I just need to know that, that lack of time availability is not going to be as much a deterrent for the nomination today in this term.
So-- so Terry, just to be clear-- and I appreciate bringing that up. You know--
Thank you.
We're, we're all busy.
Yep.
And-- you know, and, and on top of the fact of being busy-- sometimes you just have to make adjustments in your schedule-- you know, to make time. So-- I think I've done that, and I'm prepared to do that. And, you know, at the end of the day, the bottom line is, I wasn't going to step over Bob. It just wasn't going to happen. We worked together as a team. I thought he'd done a good job. I was content in the, in the position, and I was satisfied with his performance. So it was easier for me, from a time perspective, yes, it was. But now, I think, you know, things have changed. I need to manage my time better, which I think I've done and will continue to do. And that's really what I got to say about that.
I appreciate that. And, you know, as you know, I, I'm happy to support you. I, I have, you know, ever since the beginning that I was elected, I, I just needed to feel confident that, you know, this was something that you were now ready to take on, where you've-- you know, I've had to redraw the nominations before. So I'm, I'm thrilled. Third time's a charm.
Well, that's, that, you must have been reading my mind, because that was the next words out of my mouth. Third time's a charm, Tom, charm, Terry, so. Okay, so nomination-- yes, councillor Toronto.
Thank you. I want to thank Terry also for the nomination, just, and I appreciate that. And, you know, when, when Bob had left, which I think we were all kind of a little bit shocked over, that was, it was a big shock to the, to the system here. You know, it's a lot of changes. Here we are tonight. We're making change because of that change that was made, you know, with Bob leaving. And-- you know, in business, and you guys know I have a business background, the first choice is going to be someone who has the experience. And so Mike had talked with Paul. I said, Paul, you've got the experience. You're going to hit the ground running. And you've done this, and we're all going to be able to feel comfortable that you, you've got your eye on the ball. So, and I'm confident you'll put the time in, because I know you don't commit to something and not put the time in. So I know you're a hard worker. So I'm very comfortable, and I'm supporting you as well in this--
Okay.
Because I know you're, you know, you'll do a good job.
Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate it. So-- let's vote on the first nomination, which was myself. A little awkward to say that. But-- so we have a, the first nomination was for Paul Rodriguez, and so we had a second on that. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you very much. I am-- I'm humbled by, by your support and confidence. And-- after we do the election of the vice president, I'd like to make a few brief remarks, if you, if you'd allow me to do that, please. So having said that, let's move on to number four, memorandum of town administrator in reference to selection of town council vice president. If you want to do that. Yes, ma'am, sorry. Chris said, let's, let's get to work. I will. Thank you very much. Oh, you guys are too much. Okay, number four, memorandum of town administrator in reference to selection of town council vice president.
Motion to receive said memorandum, second.
We have a motion and a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint or elect Mr. Thomas Welch III for vice chair.
Okay, I'll second that. Do we have any further nominations? Mr. Logan?
I would like to nominate Dennis Toronto as vice chair.
Okay. So we have two nominations. Are there any further nominations? Okay. We have two, two names placed in nomination, Thomas P. Welch and Dennis Toronto. We will vote on Mr. Welch first. Discussion, Mrs. Von Villas.
Yes, I would like to say that I definitely support Mr. Welch for this position, that he's relatively new to the council, but he has a mature understanding of the responsibilities and roles of both the town administrator and the town council, as well as a commitment to the intelligent growth and economic prosperity of the town as a whole. And I think that makes him tremendously-- suitable for the, for the role.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Vice-- or Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you. So-- so Tom Welch and Dennis Toronto are the nominations?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I hear that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay. You know, the vice president has to stand in for the president. And-- I appreciate-- Mrs. Santos made the, made the nomination for Mr. Welch. Is that true?
That's correct.
I'd like to hear from Mrs. Santos's perspective on that nomination.
If, if she wants to, you're not required--
No, I do not. I nominate Welch, and I'm going to stick by my nomination.
Okay, I was just looking for some-- support for the nomination, Mrs. Santos.
I have my reasons.
Well, I, I'm-- this is the opportunity to share them, but certainly if you are not required to, that's fine. I would-- I guess I would observe that councillor Toronto was elected and re-elected by the residents and has four years of experience on the dais. He, he runs a successful business. He's gone through four Middletown budget seasons. He's put in more docket requests than many of the sitting councillors, and he's been the champion for expanding tax exemptions, retaining the senior housing conversation, pursuing cutting-edge education opportunities, and of course reincarding Woodsy the Owl, just, just to name a few, that, you know, he's been very active in town council and knows how to get things done. You know, we-- this council has a lot of impressive things to accomplish this term. And, you know, Paul is busy. We know that. And I know he's going to manage it, but it doesn't change the fact that he's busy. Councillor Toronto has historic and parliamentary experience that will make these agendas relevant and the meetings run smoothly. This is what the public deserves. Just as the president's election is so council can get up to speed quickly, the vice president's election is not just who could possibly do the task of the position, but who will be the best vice president for getting council business done without missing a beat, whether the president has time or not. And Middletown residents should feel confident that this council has voted with that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. Okay, so-- there was a mo, a motion made first to-- yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, Mr. Toronto.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank you for the nomination, Terry, and, and, you know, the things you have said, and I do agree. You know, I'm looking at this as well as a team up here. And I just want to say that I do believe that I did earn the position as vice president. I have been on the council for four years. I'm going into my fifth year. I do have a lot of experience. I couldn't imagine, after two or three months in town council, that I would be a VP up here. It's just so much to learn. And no disrespect to, to Tom, I think Tom could do a good job, but I think there's a lot of things you learn as you are involved in the council. I don't think you can learn it not being on the council. Okay, so that's why I would have a hard time supporting Tom as VP, because I just don't-- doesn't have that experience. That's just one of my concerns. We're two different people. I'm more of a, I'm a business gentleman. Tom and I have talked. He, he came up, you know, as a fire-- a firefighter. And as I said the other night, I turned to him for his expert on that. I think I bring a whole different side to, to the position, and that's from a business standpoint and getting things done. And again, being on the council for a number of years, I've learned a lot, and I feel I can get up to speed pretty quickly on this. So I do appreciate the nomination, but I'll also say, if the council decides to move in a different direction, I'm still one hundred percent committed to this council and to representing the people of Middletown. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any further discussion? Okay. So let's vote on, in order of nomination. First nomination was Thomas P. Welch. All in favor of Thomas P. Welch as, as vice president? Aye. Okay. That'll, that'll solidify that. So we have-- any opposed?
No.
Oh.
No opposed?
Yeah, yeah, opposed to the motion for Mr. Welch to be vice president?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so--
Opposed.
Thank you. Five to two, Mr. Welch. Congratulations. All right, all right.
Can I say something, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Welch. Go right ahead, Mr. Vice President.
I too am humbled, just the fact that I am here in the first place, but to get supportive councillors to be vice president is-- says a lot, and I, I take that-- very seriously. Terry and Dennis, I absolutely understand what you're saying. It's factual. But I also believe that we're a team here, and that together we will do fine. And there's more than one way up the mountain. I might not go Dennis's way, but I think I can speak to him or you, Terry, and we'll, we'll get up there for the best of the people. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd just like to make a few brief remarks. If you would just bear with me a couple of minutes, please.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. It is an honor and a privilege to serve you and all the residents as your town council president. I am grateful for your support and confidence in me to lead and guide our great town of Middletown for current and future, future success. However, this position is not a solo position. This is a team position. The letter "I" needs to be secondary to the letter, to the word "we" in all our actions. The letter "I" is a singular pronoun-- you'll like this, Mrs. Von Villas.
I hear you.
The letter "I" is a singular pronoun used by a speaker in referring to herself or himself. We will accomplish nothing in that context. The word "we," a plural pronoun, uses a subject of a verb to refer to all people, especially when considered as a group. We will accomplish any task or town issue at hand in this context. A great group of town councillors, combined with the great town administration and staff with the valuable input from our residents-- is conducive to making Middletown better today, tomorrow, and for the foreseeable future. It takes a solid team of forward thinkers and unity built on collaboration with respect for one another at all times, regardless of agreement or disagreement on any issue. A lot of times, we, we have the same visions, but see different avenues on how to get there. This creates a healthy diversity of ideas, thoughts, and opinions that must be accompanied by civility at all times. We must all be pulling the rope from the same end and not against each other. We had a hurt, we are here to serve the people of Middletown to the best of our abilities. As we transact the town's business and discuss the town's issues, we must keep in mind that service will always be our top priority. A word that is currently popular in political talk is the word transparency. To us, it means that the people of Middletown will always know what we are doing and why we are doing it, and that there will be ample time for you to understand the issues and participate in the discussions. There are a lot of issues that need solutions. As Terry had mentioned earlier, senior housing, short-term rentals, affordability is always on, on every council's mind, not just today, for tomorrow. Dennis's educational improvements, tax relief, water quality improvements, infrastructure improvements, and of course, developing new revenue streams to be able to pay for those endeavors, as well as balancing our residents' quality of life. We will promise you one thing for sure, that we will be passionate about protecting our taxpayers' tax dollars. We are committed to seeing that the town uses its resources very, very carefully to ensure that Middletown remains vibrant and a great place to live, both now and a hundred years from now. We're not making decisions just for today. We cannot predict the future, but we can work together to, to position Middletown to weather any difficult issues that may arise. We will pledge to you that we will always be available and responsive to all the people of Middletown. We need-- I said this statement when I was sworn in as council president in two thousand four. It's never left my mind, and I'm going to say it again. We need to remember that we are one. You have placed great trust in us, that we will honor and respect. We are grateful and thank you for the opportunity to work with and for you, and we look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Well done.
Okay. All right. Enough of that. Let's get on, let's get to work, Mr. Logan. All right. Okay, let's move on to number five. Town council business. Number five is memorandum of councillor Flynn in reference to tax proposal, tiered tax, flat rate tax.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, and I just want to remind everybody, we're actually just picking up from where we left off last meeting. That's why we haven't got the public forum or consent calendar or anything like that, okay? Councillor Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want, need to let you, the IT know that I'm getting messages like unstable internet, and I don't think it's on my end. So sometimes the audio absolutely drops, and I, I can't hear anything. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
So item number five, this is a proposal, simply a proposal, to see if the town council thinks an idea is good enough to forward it to staff. In other words, does the town council think the idea has potential to benefit the residents of the town and is worth paying staff time to get additional information and details, as opposed to trying to get the research, you know, and then present it to you, you know, bother the town administrator or the solicitor or the tax assessor. I'm coming to you first, because if you're not interested, I'm not going to spend the taxpayers' money on staff time. So a little background information that's attached to the docket item is that, you know, Middletown, and this came back a couple of years ago, that, you know, when I brought this forward in, in April of two thousand nineteen, you know, Middletown is appealing as a second home market, and this is creating what's known as dark neighborhoods. The Quinnic Island Planet Commission had a huge housing forum that very spring in two thousand nineteen, all about this trend. Now, property owners with multiple homes have multiple resources. I noted at our February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, that the town solicitor indicated that legislation or statutes already exist for split residential rates for owner and non-owner occupied residences. So there may be, to be confirmed, about forty thousand, or I'm sorry, forty percent of Middletown's fifty-two-hundred residential properties that are non-owner occupied. So just thinking, and this is all in the, the cover memo, if we had a tiered tax, a flat rate tax, or a tax rate that just collected a mere two hundred dollars per property of the forty percent of the fifty-two-hundred, that would provide about four hundred thousand dollars in revenue to the town. So this is not any amount that any single taxpayer would get concerned about, but totaled up, it injects a notable sum of tax revenue to the town that could help our citizens out. So my, the question is, is it the town council's desire to find out more?
Okay, thank you, councillor Flynn. Is any, any discussion on this? Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Terry, are you suggesting that, that in your example, the four hundred thousand dollars would be-- where would that money go?
Well, that would be, this would be the questions to pursue with, that would be a solicitor question. Is the, you know, legislation or statute that he referenced in our February meeting, is that flexible? Or do we have to put the money in the general fund, or can we dedicate it? Can it go to our, expanding our exemptions? The parameters, limitations, flexibility of that law would be provided by the solicitor, if the town council would like to find out the answers to those types of questions. Did I answer your question?
You did, thank you.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Regan-- Peter, from a, from a legal perspective or enabling legislation, could you just kind of, kind of lay that, that both scenarios out, whether it's a, whether it's a tax, whether it's a fee, whether it's resident, whether it's non-resident, and explain how that works, please?
Yeah, so right now, as most folks know, we have a, we have two tax rates. We have a commercial rate, and we have a residential rate. The state law, and this is actually in section forty-four-five dash eleven point eight of the general laws, which deals with tax classifications, allows with regard to the residential tax, tax, a couple of options. One is a homestead exemption, which the council has looked at previously. And also, in lieu of a homestead exemption, allows us to divide the residential rate into non-owner occupied and owner occupied classes, and adopt a separate tax rate for each of those. So we can have a, a tax rate for owner occupied property, residential, and a residential tax rate for non-owner occupied property. And that's allowed under current law. It, the, the current law does not allow for a flat fee, or that can be assessed against someone who does not maintain a primary residence in Middletown, but it does allow for a split residential rate. What the town does with the tax revenue when it comes in, whether it goes into the general fund, whether they designate it for certain other portions of the budget, that's really a local issue that's within the discretion of the town. But from, from a state-enabling legislation point of view, you have the option of, of, in the residential tax classification, of either a homestead exemption or a split rate between owner occupied and non-owner occupied.
So that could potentially affect Middletown residents that own more than one home as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Who, who, are you, are you yesing me, Mr. President?
Yeah, oh, sorry, yes, Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you. So that was actually on my, my long list of questions, Mr. Regan, is, is there any flexibility for residents who have those multiple properties-- for residents who have those multiple properties to be exempt?
No, I mean, your property is going to fall into either the owner occupied category or the non-owner occupied category, and those are the options that are available currently under existing state law. If we wanted to do something different in Middletown, it would require us to get enabling legislation passed by the General Assembly allowing us to do something different.
And, and I think as, if they are second properties or third and fourth properties, they are likely investment properties, and so I'm, you know, I think that if it's not, you know, anything that's too onerous as far as an amount goes, it may be something to be considered, and maybe these are some numbers that the assessor, the tax assessor would want to look at, but again, that's up to the will of the council to see if this is something, what's intriguing about this is that it's turnkey. We don't have to recreate the wheel and go to the state starting from scratch. It already exists, it's something we can do if we, you know, define it to the point that everybody's comfortable with it, and it's a lot less work.
Okay. Councillor Santos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm curious, Mr. Sylvester, who is going to keep track of people who do not live in their home, are only using it as rental property, but yet, at some point in time, they come back and make this this permanent residency? Who's going to keep track of that? Are we going to hire more people in the tax assessor's office? Apparently, Mrs. Flynn has never worked for the town, she doesn't know what goes on in the tax assessor's office.
Excuse me, Mrs. Santos, I think anybody who moves back to be a full-time resident, it's in their best interest to make an appointment at the assessor's office and let them know so that they get the owner occupied rate.
Yeah, my assumption is it would be a similar setup to how we handle, for example, senior exemptions to, for folks that may move to Florida and we've had, and then decide to move back to Middletown, and actually made some adjustments to the ordinance to allow for that. So, but, but there is, there would typically, for any of these programs, be a registration requirement, and that might be on an annual basis to make sure that the information is up to date.
Okay. Councillor Von Villes.
Yes, I'm a big picture person, and I get concerned when we start talking about tinkering with these pieces of things. Mrs. Santos brought up something that actually struck me as well, trying, the regulation issue that we have, for example, with short-term rentals, this would be complicating or compounding that particular issue. I do understand that, that a lot of the proposal that you're making, Mrs. Flynn, has some, has some validity. My suggestion would be perhaps that the town administrator, when he returns, could maybe sit down with the tax assessor, and they could put together something in terms of, so that we could see the big picture as opposed to say, yeah, this is a good idea, or that's a good idea, or whatever. What would be the total implications of this, and how would it affect the workings of the town? The idea, my initial response was, was the idea of regulation, that's why I smiled when Mrs. Santos brought it up. But I think there are a lot more issues involved in this, so rather than the council tinkering with something here, I would rather see the, the town administrator and the tax assessor and the solicitor have the discussion together as to what makes sense, and then perhaps, if it is something, then bring it back to us, but not until that groundwork is done.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn.
That's exactly what I was trying to get to. If, and the motion would be to forward the concept and any council of questions to the town administrator, solicitor, and tax assessor for feedback to the council, you know, by its, you know, May 17th or, or first June meeting.
I don't think there needs to be a motion.
Okay.
Oh.
Hang on one sec, so, I think that, you know, I had actually brought this, this same idea up, I'm going to say probably about six or eight years ago, and I brought it to, brought it to the council, and, and I did that because one of my cousins had, had bought a place in Vermont, and he was telling me about it because his neighbor came out and thanked him for, for paying more taxes on a different tax rate for a non-resident, and because that money, what Vermont did at the time, they took that money and they restricted it just for their schools, to help pay for the increases in schools. So, when, when I brought it forward, the town looked at, and I believe what I was told at the time, Vermont was the only, only state in the country that was doing that. So, Terry's request tonight is very similar, and, you know, look, I, I look at it as we have to, at least, and I've learned this from Mrs. Von Villes, we at least have to gather information. If we don't gather information, then we don't, we can't make decisions based on no facts, and I've been, I've been guilty of that in the past, because, you know, when you feel strong about a subject, and you're like, nope, 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 you dig your heels in when you don't have the proper information to make that decision based off your own personal feelings. So, having said that, I would certainly support at least having a look at this, let it come back to us, and tell us what the pros are, tell us what the cons are, and then we can make a decision based on the information that, that's gathered. So, I would certainly, certainly support that. So, I don't know, Terry, if you want to make that in a form of a motion, or?
I, I do, I, I think that to get it on the, the to-do list, so to speak, the project list, I think that I would like to hold the motion. Do you need me to read it again?
Please.
The motion would be to forward this concept, and any, any council questions to the town administrator, solicitor, and tax assessor for feedback to the council by its May 17th or first meeting in June meeting.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, excellent. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. Let's move on to number six, communication of, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Is Mr. Bagwell on? John, I apologize if you can hear me. Thank you, Mrs. Santos.
Can you hear me?
Yes, John, I apologize.
That's all right.
I, I'm getting ahead of myself, sir. Go right ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
587 Tuckerman Avenue, Middletown. Well, first of all, I'm going to make some references to MEDAC, I'm a member of MEDAC, but I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as a member of MEDAC. And I was pleased, Paul, to hear you repeat three objectives that you and the council will keep in mind, and that is, these are objectives that were expressed by both you and Bob Sylvia several months ago, when you asked for new sources of revenue, new streams of revenue that would assist in the affordability of houses, homes, and provide tax relief, provide a new streams of revenue. MEDAC took that very seriously, obviously, and we made a proposal. Actually, there were a couple, but the one I want to focus on was the homestead exemption. And frankly, I've heard discussions of the homestead exemption up to this point, and each one violated, if you will, one of the key tenets of what MEDAC proposed, and that is that we proposed that any homestead exemption would in fact impact only the residential taxes. And we followed that up, frankly, with a memorandum of Bob Sylvia that I sent to him in, on August 10, 2020, basically showing that a 15% homestead exemption would result in a 5%, 2%, 5.2% reduction in the taxes for all the people that are residents, while increasing the taxes for non-residents by 11.5%. Now, at this point, I would like to do is to urge the council to go back and include in this study that you, along with Terry's, the homestead exemption as the MEDAC originally proposed it, and that is a, an exemption that would apply only to residential properties. And I, I don't see this as a closed book. I also should add, there's a certain sense of urgency about this, because under the same tax law that Peter Regan referred to, it also said that once a relationship is established between the commercial tax and the residential tax, or the, any of the, any of the relationships, you cannot change them except during the year following the valuation. So, if you're ever going to, if you're going to put a homestead exemption in between now and the next three years, it's something that has to be done this year. And I would like at least the council to take a fresh look at this, I'm working with George, take a look at Terry's, and come back and find out which one meets the objectives of increasing affordability, providing tax relief to permanent, to regular residents, and offers a significant new stream of revenue. So, thanks very much for listening to me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bagwell. Haven't heard Mr. Bagwell's comments, is there any appetite for that, or you just want to take on the, Terry's proposal as voted upon?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, any further discussion based on Mr. Bagwell's comments? Okay, let's move, thank you, Mr. Bagwell. Let's move on to number six, communication of Councillor Toronto in reference to property tax assessment overview.
Welcome to receiving second communication. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Councillor Toronto.
Yes, George on?
Is, is George, Mr. Q, is George on?
He is, sir.
He is. Okay.
Okay. The request I had put in is pertaining to the tax assessment, the reassessment that we just underwent, and I basically, I would like to have the tax assessor present an analysis. I have requested this weeks and weeks ago, so this has moved forward, so I'm hoping we can get a lot of good information tonight.
Okay.
We'd like to have the tax assessor present an analysis of the recent property assessments in Middletown. I would like to understand the percent increase as an average, you know, what is, what was it over the average? I've heard people saying 19, 20, I, I don't know what, what average percent each home went up, so I'd be interested in that. The range of the increase, too, I've heard people, some people's taxes have gone up 10%, and some people's taxes have gone up 30%, or excuse me, I should say their assessment, which in essence is taxes, okay? The mill rate will move, as everyone knows, you know, and we can talk a little bit about that and ask George to explain this and how this works, because this just happened three years ago, and what happened was, you know, average properties went up a certain amount, and we had to bring the mill rate down, okay? But that had, had winners and losers, okay? Because, you know, this is what they told me at the state level, the, the winners are the people whose taxes went down, the losers are the people whose taxes went up. I say, well, that's, that's pretty bad, actually, because people who are paying a lot in taxes are losers, and, you know, so it was, this is how they pick winners and losers, I hate that saying, because it shouldn't be picking winners and losers, it should be fair across the board. But what you're going to see is this, this reassessment runs a little havoc on our town in regards to it starts segmenting people. And in the Ripec document that we had spent a lot of time on, that the town had requested, they actually broke up the town into 28 neighborhoods, okay? And each neighborhood had a different percentage increase. So, I'm interested in seeing this. Where this year did we see the big increases and why? And how's that affecting the neighbors who are living in that neighborhood? So, that will also, once we know all that and all the good stuff of the total amount of all the property in Middletown, then we'll figure out what our mill rate is. So, I'm hoping that he's going to share with us what the, what's going to happen with the mill rate. It's going to come down, I'm just not sure how much it's going to come down, okay? And, and that was the primary purpose of this, but I did see that there was an appetite for people to talk a little bit about tax reform. You know, everyone's talking homestead, they're looking at short-term rentals, they're looking at residents and non-residents. We've had several meetings over the last three or four years to discuss tax relief, and we haven't done anything. And so, we need to, you know, I'd like to throw the Model 3 out again in regards to the Ripec document, which is this document that everyone appears familiar with, and this is the study that the council had requested based on a few of the changes. So, I just want to bring this up for further conversation down the road, not this evening.
Thank you very much.
But I would like to hear from George, though, in regards to, again, what happened during the most current reassessment, and how's that affecting our town and our tax rate and our mill rate?
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Toronto. So, George, if you could just state your name, and George is our, our tax assessor, and you can present your presentation and overview of the most recent Middletown revaluation, because Dennis is right, it can be confusing, sometimes it was, and we sit here. So, some residents think, oh, my, my assessment went up this much, my taxes are going up that much. So, if, George, you could just explain the, what Dennis is requesting in an overview of the revaluation with some key points, as simple as possible, so that everyone can, can, can understand, please.
Good evening, everybody. We just completed our statistical revaluation as of December 31, 2020, 2020, and it was conducted this year by Vision Government Services. Let's see, so, we did a statistical revale this year as opposed to a full revale. In terms of the state law, we are required to revale properties every nine years, we do a full, full revaluation. In the interim, we do statistical updates, and that's where we are right now. Every three years after a full year, after a full revale, we do a statistical. Typically, this involves a complete analysis of properties that have undergone a significant renovation or have been sold. The revale company will attempt to go into each of those prop, those properties that fall into those categories. However, this year, due to COVID, they did not do any interior inspections, they did outside measurements, they went up to property owners and conducted face-to-face interviews where possible, they reviewed online photographs from Realtor websites such as Zillow or Redfin to get a sense of what properties that sold for actually looked like on the interior. Otherwise, they relied on the, the field cards that were existing in our system already. Does anybody have any questions as to the methodology that was used? This is standard throughout the state and probably throughout the nation. So, they did not go into every property, they did not attempt to go into every property, and, and they did not attempt to go into the sales or the significant remodels because of COVID-19, whereas ordinarily, they would have done interior inspections.
Okay.
So, for the current analysis, I looked at about 4,700 residential properties, those are mostly single-family dwellings and two-to-five family dwellings. This does not include residential condominiums, nor does it include land. For this year, the average single-family dwelling was assessed value is $550,720. That's an increase of $83,696, or 17.92% over the last revale which was done in 2017. The median, which is the midpoint between the high and the low, increased to $430,250, which was an increase of $74,650, or 21%. So, it appears that the lower half of the, the town's residences increased more this time than they did the last time. But overall, we have almost 18% increase in the average and 21% increase in the median, and Vision's experience is that it is happening across the state. So, in, in that perspective, we are not unusual for the state of Rhode Island, and as, as you read in the Middletown news last week, there have been reports that this phenomenon has been going on across the there have been reports that this phenomenon has been going on across the country. Um, so it, you know, it's, it is happening here. Um, it, it's, it's, it's kind of eye-popping at first, but when you look at the data and, and you try and find houses for sale or see what's going on in the market, uh, it's, it's not as surprising as it appears. On the commercial side, I have, uh, looked at two hundred and ninety-one commercial properties. Again, those do not include the retail or industrial condominiums, um, and it does not include land. Um, for the average, as you can see, the average, uh, commercial value was two point two-one-two million, which was an increase of, uh, eight point five-five percent over the last revale period of twenty-seventeen. The median is eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred dollars, which is an increase of, uh, seven point nine-five. So it's pretty, not quite as spread out as, as the residential increases. Um, but still, and it's pretty tight, around an eight percent, uh, increase in the, uh, commercial values in the town. So what does this mean? Um, the levy that was approved last year was for approximately forty-seven million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. The tax rates for residential were thirteen point seven-six, and for commercial was eighteen point two-one. If you use that same levy, forty-seven million, five forty, and the new, uh, values, as we, as you were discussing before, with an increase in value, you should see a decrease in the tax rates. Well, in this case, if you use the same levy, um, the normalized tax rates using our new revale would drop the residential from, uh, thirteen seventy-six down to twelve point oh-three, and the commercial would drop from eighteen twenty-one to sixteen point two-four dollars per thousand. That, that's just using last year's numbers off of the budget and this year's new revale numbers.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Uh, George, Council of Toronto has a question.
I got you.
Thank you, George. Um, so can you just explain as a percentage standpoint how much the mill rate will be coming down as a percentage now?
Um, stick with me, Dennis, I think that's my next slide.
All right, perfect.
So, this is the impact, maybe, hopefully this will answer your question, but this is the impact it would have, uh, that those numbers would have, those mill rates would have on, uh, a residence. So, the, okay, so I, I've got a mistake in my slide here. It should be five hundred and fifty thousand versus, um, five forty-eight. I apologize for that, but I, I don't think there's a huge difference there. So, for the average dwelling, uh, as of the last revale, with a, a value of four sixty-seven and a tax rate of thirteen seventy-six, the tax would have been six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. With the new revale, the average home, using this number of five forty-eight, and a tax rate of twelve dollars, three cents, which is the normalized rate, the tax would be six hundred, six thousand, five ninety-three. The difference, the increase to an average property would be about a hundred and sixty-seven dollars, forty-nine cents per year, and the, the change would, in the taxes would be two point six-one percent. That's for the average. For the median, um, which is slightly less, this shows, it's about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for this year. So the median tax, uh, the, the tax on a median value property last time, uh, was four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh, the tax on the median value property would increase to five thousand, one forty-eight this time for a difference of two hundred and fifty-five dollars, or five point two-two percent. That's just, um, your residential properties. Am I on track with you, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay.
And George, I just, I just want to make clear, those numbers are based off this current budget, not the, not the budget that we're about to take on, and that, you know, that's, that won't be reflective of the bills that will come out in August. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, the, the, these tax rates of twelve point oh-three are using last year's budget numbers.
So, George, I'm sorry, this is Dennis. Um, so in this, in your scenario here, this, just say this person's assessment went up by seventeen percent. Is that fair to say? Four sixty-seven to five forty-eight is about seventeen?
Um, the average, uh, we'll go back here.
Right, you were saying the seventeen percent or something along those lines?
So, that's residential. So the residential was about eighteen percent. So, let's see here, Dennis, the, the number should be five fifty. It's actually on the slide before it was five forty. There's
So if someone's, so if someone's assessment, and that's on an average right there, but if someone's assessment went up, let's say twenty-five percent, then their taxes are going to be going up a higher percent, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And if someone's
I, I, I don't have that, you know, I, I just was answering the basic questions on, on the revale.
Right, and this Yeah, and this is just bringing up the point that I wanted to make, and, and again, going back to Model Three, was predictability. There's, everyone I talked to who is waiting for this reassessment to happen, which happens every three years, did not know what it would be. They're waiting. They're like, well, someone moved in next door, and you've seen something sell down the street. I don't know. And they all got it, and they said, market value, and they all got it. And they got a, a lot of calls, oh, you moly, my land went up this way, my assessment went this way. There's no rhyme to reason. They're like, my assessment is fifty percent of my, my true value of my house is, and what's going to happen? I don't know. That's unpredictability. These numbers are, you can't, you can't predict them. So that's, that was the point I'm trying to make, is that not one person in Middletown knew what their taxes were going to be until these documents came out. That's, I don't think that should be a situation when, over, you know, the roof over your head. That's what happens every three years. The other two years, if we need a tax, we need an increase, we just raise everyone by the mill rate. One percent, two percent, everyone pays their fair share. It's that third year that it just goes bonkers, and we start moving the money around. So I'm just saying, this is an area we need to look at. I believe, this is just me, I believe this process is having a very big negative impact on our real estate, our affordability in the town, and the ability for people to stay in their homes. I really believe that this reassessment process is the problem. So I'd like to see this kind of brought into, if we're going to do the, you know, for consideration, again, uh, can we create, make it a little bit more predictable?
Okay.
If that's what the council wants, if the council says, no, we don't, we think it's predictable, then that's fine.
Okay. All right, let's let Mr. Durgan continue with his overview, please. Thank you, Dennis.
Any other questions?
Oh, go ahead, George. Is that it?
I know, I'm, I'm still going.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Uh, now we're onto the commercial. And you'll see that the rate, the, uh, the normalized rate drops from eighteen twenty-one to sixteen twenty-four. For an average value property in, uh, middle, commercial property in Middletown, um, the tax would decrease about twelve hundred, almost thirteen hundred dollars, or thirteen point, uh, three point four-seven percent from last year's value of, uh, two million, thirty-eight thousand to this year's average value of two million, two hundred and six thousand. Given the sixteen point two-four, uh, tax rate, you would see a decrease for the average commercial property in town. Moving on down to the median, again, you would see a decrease uh, from the average value, uh, the median value of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to eight hundred and six thousand dollars. You would see a decrease in the tax of approximately five hundred, that, five hundred dollars, or four point one-four percent. That's just using last year's levy numbers and this year's assessments. And that's the extent of my, uh, presentation. I, I know we had talked, we, uh, were looking into applying, um, you know, the, a, a map together that incorporated some of the Ripec data that you would ask for, but we didn't have enough time to get this together, given what happened last week. Um, we'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, George. George, I have a question. So, the commercial, the commercial properties going down, is that, is that based on, you know, COVID somewhat, because, you know, people going out of business, and, um, how, how is that? Why?
Well, again, we're working on last year's, uh, levy number. The commercial rate, the commercial values did not increase at the rate that, uh, residentials did. So, if you have more, you know, the greater share of the pie is going to shift over to the residential and, and leave less of a burden on commercial properties, even though, uh, the tax rates are, um, are diff, are higher for commercial properties. Um, the, the increase in value was not, was significantly less. I mean, it's ten percent less on a percentage basis than the residents. So, um, it's, it's going to shift the burden from commercial over to residential.
So how do they, how do they choose what, what, um, what neighborhood or what type of house, or, you know, I think the time, the, the assessment before I had questioned it, because, you know, my own personal one went up in two thousand seventeen, it went up like sixty-two thousand, I said. And the answer was, well, you know, the smaller Cape-type of homes were the ones that, you know, seen a larger increase. And so it's almost like, I hate to say this, it's almost like, you know, because the, the tax base can't, can't go down, and if commercial is, is, is less, like you said, that shifts somewhere. How do they choose where that shifts to?
Well, in, in this, this year's revale, there are, um, everybody, more, there are more properties sharing the burden this time than there were the last time. Whereas if you had a, a five percent increase in your value the last time, you might have seen a, a tax reduction. This year, everybody's pro, properties went up, uh, significantly. Um, you know, obviously, there are a few, but I'm, and I am speaking in general terms. So, you know, properties on the west side, which, you know, might have seen a tax reduction last time, they're not going to get that this time, it, it, using this, the, these figures. Um, it, it, it's just, it's being spread out more. Um, it, it's just a difficult, I mean, it's difficult, as you know, to, to find property in Middletown, whether it's a starter home, or, uh, you know, something expanded. There's just not a lot of product out there. So what's happening is, you know, the, the bid, there's bidding wars for everything, and, and, and the residential tax base is just increasing at a faster rate than the commercial rate. Uh, so it's, it's more, it's broader this time than it was last time. Last time, I, I could point to, um, you know, the single-family ranch home that people are trying to downsize into. Now, now it's just everything, uh, across the board, where they're, they're trying to, to move into and, and get into mid, Middletown. But as I said, this is a phenomenon that every community in the state is, is wrestling with. Um, we just have the benefit of having a broader market because of our proximity to the ocean and, and to Newport.
Okay, George. Um, any councils have any questions of Mr. Durgan?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, Council of Flynn.
Uh, thank you. Uh, hi, George, thanks so much for this information. This is great for all of our residents. I have two quick questions. Um, the, this PowerPoint, will it be on the website under the Tax Assessors world?
I can put it there, yeah, absolutely.
I, I think that people would like to see it. You might want to correct that one, uh, field.
And I had it updated, but I didn't
No worries, no worries at all. I appreciate you getting the information. Everybody's busy. Uh, my question is on, uh, the world of appeals. If you could tell everybody, you know, where that process is and how that might impact these numbers, and, you know, are, do you have, uh, you know, are you overscheduled for appeals? And, you know, if you can just touch on that, what people need to do, um, you know, what deadlines are coming up or that they missed?
So, when everybody got their notice, um, of the value, they were given a number and a website of, to contact Vision, uh, for the purpose of talking to them in, on an informal basis, um, about their values. Um, that process ended, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, they took the data in, they've, they've revisited some of the properties. Um, if, it may be that you didn't say anything, and there, there will be a change in your, your assessment. You'll be notified. Um, but those notifications went out. They were supposed to leave their property on Friday. If the initial notifications are any, uh, indicator of what's happening, it probably hit the mail today or tomorrow. So that taxpayers will have, um, Vision's decision, um, this week. Um, not, and then it comes back into this office. If they're, they're not satisfied, they can come to me, um, and I will revisit it. You know, sometimes there are changes in the property description. What's, somebody's ba, had forty-three bathrooms in there, listed on their card, when there should only be four. Now, that's, that's an easy fix, obviously, but it'll throw your value out of whack, seriously. Um, so I look for things like that. So that's where we are right now. Um, the decisions from Vision are, are hitting the street, and then the, everything comes in-house now, and people can contact me directly. Um, legally, the appeal process will start, um, after the tax rate is set. Uh, so you have to remember too, that it's nicer for the town, let's iron these kinks out right now before we set the tax rate. But legal, the legal process begins, um, after the bills actually hit. We send our bills out early, um, August, and the first payment is due September tenth. And the appeals period, period starts on September tenth and runs through December tenth. That's the formal appeal process, where you submit, uh, paperwork to the, to us. Uh, we either act on it, we don't act on it, or we just pass it on to the board for deal. Um, and after that, it's, it's going to the court system. But, you know, I, I prefer to, to solve all of these. Usually, it's not a huge problem, uh, but, you know, I, I try and take care of everything in-house before we get into the court system. But, so right now, it's, it's still informal. Vision's out of it. They contact me directly, um, and then after that, I do my analysis, make my decisions, and then we present the, the final tax roll, uh, to you, um, and along with the, the budget, and we, we work out a tax rate, and then, uh, the second bite of the apple starts September tenth.
Great, thank you very much, George.
Okay, George. George, Mrs. Santos has a question.
George, is the, the tax roll for the twenty-twenty year on the website?
Uh, yes, I believe it is. If it's not, I'll, I'll make sure it's tomorrow, first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
George, I would just ask that, um, I think it's a great idea that, uh, that these examples, um, and averages go up there. But I would, and I would again highlight on the website, these numbers are based off of last year's budget. So there's, you know, it doesn't create, uh, the, uh, some unintended consequences.
I will, uh, work with Matt Shealy. He's been great, uh, to work with as far as getting this stuff out in the proper format. I, I'd like to add one other thing, as far as the exemptions go, is, uh, Mrs. Santos, um, is a champion of these, that the tax savings will remain the same. Um, if, if you received a, you know, a five hundred and fifty-dollar tax saving, tax savings, last year, you'll get the same amount this year. Um, e, even if, it's because what happens is if your, if your value goes up and you just, if you just track the same percentage, and the, and the, uh, and the tax rate goes down, you, you're, you would lose on the, on the exemption end. So state law has it that the tax rate, the tax savings, the tax benefit will stay the same this year as it was last year.
And, and I just want to make a point for anybody that's listening, and George said, well, you know, then I And, and I just want to make a point for anybody that's listening and George said, well, you know, then I make my decisions. George is governed by the laws of the state. He's not governed by the laws of the town and it's designed like that so that it's consistent throughout the state. Okay. Uh, Council Toronto.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. George, just a quick question, because I've, people have asked me this question quite a bit. When Vision appraisal comes back with their assessed value of your property, is that market value they're coming back with?
It's supposed to be the full fair cash value.
Okay, what is, what do you mean by that?
It's essentially market value.
But are you in agreement that most people's assessments are not market value?
Most peoples, I, there are winners and losers, but I would say generally, you know, they have to hit a benchmark of about 90, 90 to 95% of market value. And I would say for most of the town, they're pretty close.
Well, again, if you look by area, I can, I'm just, again, unfortunately I live in the neighborhood I live in because everyone thinks that we've got tons of money over there. So I know the assessed values over there at one point were about 70% of the true sale value. And I think this year it's probably more around 50. So I only point that out, not that I want you to raise my taxes up to the true market value, because that would mean it would go up 100%.
That's what, I think that's what he's asking, George.
What I'm saying is I don't understand, I have done a little bit of this, so maybe you can answer for us. How do they come up with that? Because I know that the assessed value of, that my new assessment is probably about 50% of what I would sell my house for. How do they come up with that?
It's just through an analysis of comparable sales and, um, cost data.
Is there a formula you have that I can see that comes up, how it was calculated?
Well, we have multipliers because it's mass appraisal. We do have, we use tables and multipliers and everything, but everything has to, uh, be supported by comparable sales.
Okay. And, and it's very difficult to come up with those numbers because what George was saying is that every three years they do a statistical analysis. But every nine years is supposed to go into everybody's home. So they can look to see the condition, if there's been any additional work done, you know, things along those lines, so they can really truly have a good feel for this. And they, they do that every nine years. Just a fact, they only get into 60% of the homes. Okay? Which means there's homes today that no one's ever gone in and they're still trying to figure out what the house is worth. So it's just another flaw in the system. It's a flaw in the data. It's, there's different flaws in our current tax methodology, the abolish, abolish tax methodology. And it's, it's something we have to look at, okay? Just from the standpoint, this reassessment process, when people talk about, look at the average home now. That's $550,000. What is the income someone needs to have a $550,000 home? It's going up and up and up. And it's a, it goes directly towards tax burden as well, okay? So I think it's something we should consider as a council. I'm very passionate about it, as you can tell. And I think this is an area that will help us even with what we do for homestead and what we do in regards to different residential, non-residential rates and what we do with short-term rentals. I think it has an impact across the board.
Okay. Thank you, Council Toronto. We do have a couple of people that would like to speak. First, we have Michael Cunningham. Wendy, is he there? What's that? Mr. Cunningham? Okay. Okay.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Good evening. Uh, just your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Cunningham, 21 Alston Avenue. Thanks for, uh, listening. Um, first off, I want to, I want to compliment George on, on the assessment this year on one specific area. It's an important one. I did a, I did about a 300 property analysis myself and I looked at lots of neighborhoods, lifelong residents. I know this town, I know the houses, I know the neighborhoods. And what I did see this time, and I, and I talked to George about this, that the land values in the past have always been, I thought, very skewed. It, it, it didn't make much sense, even properties next door to each other. And I saw a remarkable realignment of that in this assessment. I think George alludes to that when he says it's spread across the town. So, so that's a real win on, it's a really important win. I, I do want to say, um, uh, another echoing, uh, echoing sentiment to what George has said. If you look right now, um, and, and for the past few months, right now there's roughly, it changes every day, 64 properties for sale in Newport, 67 for sale in Portsmouth, seven for sale in Middletown. And, and that, and so it is a hot, hot town right now. On another point that I've learned in recent weeks that does tie into what, what Dennis was saying about the inside of buildings and, and, and what George was alluding to is we've had a problem for a number of years with the building inspector closing out building permits. And when they don't close out the building permits, it's harder for the tax assessor to know where to go and check. And, and that I know the new building inspector said he's all over it. So that may, may change things in the future. And then they, I would, I, I completely agree with Dennis's comments about assessment versus market. The last assessment was like, yeah, okay, I mean, it's kind of the same. Recently though, this, this assessment, a lot of properties are easily at 50% what they are selling for. In fact, some of them are lower than they sold for, uh, just a few months ago. And then the final piece of this that isn't so good, and this is, I guess, going to happen in any community. But I, in my, you know, just looking around, I noticed, I looked at 443 Purgatory Ave. It's a one acre lot and it's, it's the last lot before you get to Tuckerman. It's the one on the corner of Tuckerman and Purgatory. It's a, it's a one acre lot, the closest to Second Beach on that side of the street. And its value is $358,000 for the land. My next door neighbor, uh, who's, I'm on Houston's point, on Alston, on 29 Alston, their lot is 375,000 at point 22 of an acre. So, um, overall it's great, but there are still anomalies. I think that's what the whole appeal process is. And, and, you know, if that neighbor next to the person on Purgatory said something, I think 443 Purgatory might find, and by the way, the neighbor is, is St. George's, that, um, their assessment might go up. So it is, it is still wonky, but, um, but overall those are just some additional statistics. And I, I really do want to compliment George, uh, and, and what he got Vision to do with, with spreading the wealth across the town and the property values, because now your square footage does match up with your neighbors and it wasn't like that in 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Bagwell.
Unmuted.
Yes, sir.
All right. John Bagwell, 587 Tuckerman, Middletown. I think it should come as no surprise that, uh, if a, uh, two people looking at a piece of property to buy, the individual or the, buying it as a short-term rental uses a different methodology of determining value than a family that's looking at it as a place to live. Now, it's been my experience in talking to a couple of brokers that the individual, uh, that the, that the purchaser of a property for a short-term rental is going to pay a hell of a lot more, heck of a lot more than, uh, than an individual buying it as a home. So I think frankly, I mean, this is obviously a few isolated cases. But I think frankly, it would be, uh, since so much of the value of one's home is determined for the assessment anyway, by the, uh, by comps. I would urge the council to, uh, direct George to remove all sales to, uh, short-term rentals from his calculation. So that, uh, the, uh, so if you, you bought a house and you're living in a house at your home, it can be based upon comps of others, of sales to others who bought houses to live in, not to, not as investments. Now perhaps George could comment on whether or not, uh, this makes any sense or not.
It's possible. I'm not sure you'll, you'll you'll find what we're looking for, but it is possible. And, uh, you know, I would, I would have to match up existing, the existing role for short-term rentals. Maybe the, the, the new applications to see if there were any sales transactions, uh, that, that involved a short-term rental. You know, residential real estate, single-family residential real estate as an investment, uh, for rental property is not limited to short-term rentals. But it's, it's out there that people are just buying homes to rent to other families that maybe, you know, which is a good thing, because if you can't afford a house, then you rent the house. So, um, yeah, we can look at that. I'm not exactly sure what we'll find, but, you know, we can take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion or comments on, uh, George's overview?
Mr. President. I just want to thank you, George, for your time tonight and, uh, good information. And I'll probably give you a call just to get a few more questions answered.
And if anybody has a question, yeah.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, Council Flynn.
Yes, uh, so George, I was just wondering, I, I know it's been a tough week for everybody and, uh, the numbers per neighborhood. Do you know when that, you might be able to pull those numbers together? You know, maybe, uh, you know, our second weekend, our second meeting in May? I know it's busy.
I, I, I would assume that we can have that by, by the middle of May, yeah.
That, that, thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, George, nice job tonight. We appreciate you taking the time to get on and, and, uh, do a real, uh, nice overview of, um, the, the most recent, uh, revale. And, uh, thank you for, thank you for doing that. And I love the background there, George, with the town hall.
You look great.
Well done, thank you, George. And thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the, uh, Town Administrator portion of the docket, uh, number seven. Memorandum of Town Administrator in reference to amended parking restriction on Walcott Avenue.
Motion to receive said memorandum, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's, uh, let's, uh, let's have some discussion on this. I don't know if, uh, if, uh, Bill, you wanna, you want to talk about it? Or Peter, you want to talk about a little bit what's going on here with the last three parking spots?
Yeah, members of the council, agenda item seven involves the request by Town Administrator Brown and the administration for your consideration to amend the parking restrictions at the end of Walcott and Tuckerman Avenue.
Hey, Bill? Hey, Bill? Excuse me, could you just talk into the mic, please?
The requested amended restrictions would include restricting the number of vehicle parking spots at the end of Tuckerman and Walcott intersection in the vicinity, uh, which is negative, which has negatively impacted the quality of life of residents in that area, particularly during the summer months. Late night activity in the neighborhood has contributed to residents' concerns for their safety as well as cars parking illegally. The administration recommends the council amend the parking regulations specifically restricting parking to an area located on the southwest end of the street where parking is currently allowed. And this parking would be limited to three parking spaces. No parking would be allowed from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. There are currently no restrictions on that. And parking would be limited to a time limit of two hours. In your dockets, you have a map of the proposed design by Town Engineer Warren Hall, uh, who is available for any questions that you may have on that. Also, I will converse with, uh, Town Administrator Brown to ensure that conversation with, uh, the Rhode Island Coastal Resources Management, CRMC has been, uh, has had that conversation. I believe he has had conversations with them. I just don't know what, to what extent.
And I might add to that, um, Mr. President, uh, I do know that, uh, based on discussions with several neighbors in the area regarding late night activity, uh, there was an indication that cars were also parking, uh, late night, uh, in the Purgatory Chasm parking lot. And my understanding is based on a discussion, uh, between Mr. Brown and DEM that, uh, the, a late night restriction, so no parking, uh, I think essentially in those same hours from, from sunset to sunrise in that parking lot would be allowed, uh, because apparently there were some folks that are parking in that area and then accessing, uh, the right of way and, and causing disturbances at night for the residents in that area. So that was another step that I think would be part of this plan.
Okay. Is there any, uh, any further discussion on this, Mr. Uh, Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, I, I, I got the plan and I walked down there to look at it. And a couple of things I see. There's three spaces that are 18 feet long. Uh, my truck is 22 feet long. So, um, I was a little curious about that. Now granted, I have a crew side, you know, crew cab pickup, so it's not, but typically fishermen, whoever are going to go down, they're not going to show up in a Hyundai. So there's two feet in between the spaces, um, total of 58 feet. That's going to be very difficult to get in and out of, um, for three cars, I think. Secondly, uh, it's grass. So, you know, that area outside of those hedges and that fence, um, is town property, but typically the homeowner, you know, will, will take care of it. And I just think if you concentrate all the cars there with nothing for a base, they're just going to make mud. Uh, which then if I were the homeowner, I don't know how much I would go out there and try to, you know, really keep it nice because it looks nice right now. And secondly, or lastly, I guess, is that I'm curious as to all the signs that say, uh, you know, no parking, why can't it be tow zone? I'm just thinking about, for instance, Pebble Beach. And how many call, I couldn't believe how many, uh, parking complaints there were there. So if it were, and I'm sure there's, uh, plenty of ways to go around this, but if it were a tow zone and a tow company went to bid or however it works where, you know, the town basically has nothing to do with it. The, the tow truck screws by, somebody's in a no parking, they hook them and, and they go. And that's it. There's no ticket, there's no, somebody has to watch them and the cars don't go there. I would be willing to wager that if you did that for a month, you towed somebody from out of town who's fishing, that's going to be a problem. And I bet that would curtail. I'm just wondering why it isn't a tow zone. There must be a reason.
So vehicles that are parked illegally are always subject to tow. Uh, that's incumbent upon the officer's discretion. So, um, there's a lot of time that's involved during the summer where if you're calling for a wreck, if you're calling multiple wrecks, and we have done that in the past, particularly at Pebbley Beach, where you're obstructing access for emergency vehicles, that we have towed vehicles before. And generally that kind of cures the illegal parkers that are there, because once we tow one vehicle, the rest come running out and move their vehicles. So, um, to answer your other question on the ticket, they can get ticketed and towed. So that's something that, you know, certainly a tow zone offers a more stern warning that your vehicle is going to get towed or potentially towed. I would be in favor of that. I can discuss that with Town Administrator Brown as well. Particularly in those problematic areas. I think that may be a good remedy or to add that. So that's something to consider.
And I'll also note that the signage plan that's being proposed includes signs indicating that it is a tow zone in that area, and this area is also part of the enhanced parking penalty areas as well. So if, if cars are ticketed into this area, the fines, at least during the summer season, there will be doubled.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we do have some of them that like to talk on this. Yes, Julia Rush-Tolan. Karen, can you bring her in, please? Julia, could you raise your hand, please? Just have to unmute, Julia.
Try again.
There you are. You could just state your name and address for the record, Julia, we'd appreciate it.
You bet. Julie Tolan, 455 Tuckerman Avenue. I'm really glad that the council is considering this and I'm, I applaud the, um, the efforts of the police department and the town engineer to figure out that there are three parking spaces at the bottom of Walcott Avenue. And I think that the time limit is, is wonderful. I, I'm, I was quite surprised that it was so limited, but I'm not going to complain. I think it will, I think these restrictions will be very positive for sort of peace in the neighborhood. Last summer, in large part due to COVID, uh, the, the, the scene on our rocks and our neighbors' rocks were, it was a very, it was very difficult with a lot of people coming supposedly to fish, but they would be there for eight or 10 or 12 or 14 hours all night long. And leaving a lot of, um, debris behind. And, uh, and they were not local fishermen. So I think that what they were not local fishermen. Um, so I think that what Middletown is proposing is, is a wonderful step in the right direction. And thank you for hearing the neighbors and me.
Okay, Julie, we appreciate it. Thank you. Um, okay. So Peter, next step on this, I'll go back to Sean. I think Tom brings up a real valid point about the length of vehicles. I think the intention's good. I'm not quite sure it's practical. Um, I think we really just need to look at that and, and button that up a little bit. I do like the, um, so I do like the, uh, the, the time slots also, um, in, 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 um, DEM or CRMC, they're okay with the, with the restrictiveness of the time?
I don't know whether, um, I know there's been a discussion with DEM, which controls the Purgatory Chasm lot. I don't know whether there's been a discussion with CRMC. So when Sean comes back, we'll close that loop, uh, and make sure that we at least let them know what's happening because, uh, you know, this is adjacent to a CRMC right of way to the shore. And we always want to, uh, communicate with them whenever we're making any changes to those because invariably they get calls, uh, from the folks that are, are finding restrictions on the parking. We want to make sure that they're in the loop.
Okay. Excellent.
Mr. President?
Terry.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, so once again, you know, it is gonna all come down to enforcement. Um, but I did want to bring up an email that we got in our council email where someone had inquired about possibly having bike racks, uh, in the area for visitors to access and have a place to put their bikes. And, uh, maybe this is a question for the town solicitor. Is that anything that could be considered or that's done at these right of ways or prohibited?
Well, I don't know that it would be prohibited. I think it would be, you know, at the discretion of the council, what sort of facilities they wanna, they wanna provide.
I, I, I just give you my two cents on it. I, I read that email just before I came here this evening, so I forgot about it. So thank you for bringing it up, but, um, I just don't know if I lived in that neighborhood. I want bike racks aesthetically. I'm not sure. I, I think practically it makes good sense, um, because not everybody, I'm sure there's kids that go down there and, you know, maybe they could lock their bikes up or even adults. I, I don't know. Um, I'm just not sure aesthetically, if I lived around there that I'd want, um, bike racks around my property, you know? I don't know. I don't know. Whatever the plot, pleasure of the council is.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Wel, I'm sorry, Terry, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say as far as locking your bike up, uh, I will pay more attention driving by there to see, well, I suppose if there's not a bike rack, you might not bring your bike. But, uh, as a kid, we used a telephone pole or a tree, and there are those, so.
He said as a kid, he used a telephone pole or a tree. So, yeah, right. Uh, Mrs. Flynn.
They, they had telephone poles back then. Um, so the, the question actually would, I guess, what is, I guess, standard practice for these coastal access, accesses? And, you know, is it something that would serve the public? These are things, I, I'm just responding to the, the email. I thought I'd get some initial, you know, information on the topic out in the public for that resident if they, uh, are tuning in. And if it's something that they wanted to pursue, maybe they're big bike riders, what would be their next step? Would they, you know, do a little research with CRMC or would they approach the council with a request?
Um, that's a great question that I do not have an answer to. So
Okay.
My, my gut would tell me that we'd have to forward this to, to Sean and the solicitor. And when Sean talks at CRMC about the, uh, potential restricted times, we can certainly bring that up then, Peter.
Yeah.
And Bill, okay? Fair enough?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. Let's move on to number eight, memorandum of town administrative reference to Friends of Middletown Public Library Memo of Understanding.
Motion to receive said memorandum. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, uh, Bob, are you, are you the liaison to the?
Yes.
Did you wanna talk about this or you want me to talk about it?
No, you talk about it.
Okay. So the Friends of the Library, they, they, they have in a certain area of the library, they, uh, where they sell books and videos and, and stuff like that. They raise money. Um, so really it's just, you know, to say thank you. And if the appetite of this council is to agree with that, um, so that they continue to raise money, what they're looking for is a, is a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, so that we actually have something in writing. And Peter, I don't know if you want to expound on this any further than that.
Yeah, this is something that has actually been in place for a number of years. It's just renewing this, uh, just, um, allows the Friends of the Library to operate in their space within the library to sell used books that goes to support the library operation. Uh, and it's just formalizes the arrangement, requires them to have the necessary insurance, et cetera, to protect the town. Um, so, and there are no changes in this document to what has been in place for, uh, certainly several years.
Okay. So any further discussion?
Motion to authorize the town administrator to execute the MOU for fiscal year 2022 to allow the Friends of the Middletown Public Library to operate the Friends bookstore at the Middletown Public Library. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, let's move on to number nine. Are we prepared this evening to discuss number nine? Or are we gonna continue this till, till Mr. Brown returns?
I have a brief summary statement for you and then a recommendation to defer to Mr. Brown to present the entire.
Okay, so let me read it in and then we'll, uh, we'll receive it and then we'll, we'll continue it after you make your summary statement. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. Number nine, memorandum of town administrative reference to beach operations plan update.
Motion to receive said memorandum. Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, and we do have someone that wants to speak on this too, but Mr., Mr., Kewa, go ahead, sir.
The state continues to work with adjoining states of mass in Rhode Island. The state, the town administrators and all the town managers had a recent call with DM Director, Director Coit, and they were informed that the state is developing rules and guidance for the upcoming beach season. As it stands right now, Director Coit advised that the state beaches are planning to open with the rules that were in place at the shutdown last September. With that, um, it is our hope that they may relax those guidelines as the summer progresses. Department of Health remains concerned with younger demographics and the level of vaccines that are being initiated with these young people delivered. And in addition, uh, very concerned about the COVID-19 variants, um, that are starting to plague some of the states within the United States. This is another, this will be another fluid year and will remain agile and adjust accordingly. TA Brown will present the final beach plans at an upcoming meeting. And Will Cronin has, uh, also online if you have any specific questions that, uh, and the plans that are in your packet, but he will present at a future meeting.
Okay. Does, uh, any counselor have any, any questions that they want to ask? So when Mr. Brown comes back, that, uh, that you read in the docket as far as the plan is presented in the docket, that you could potentially ask that you're unsure of or we may not have an answer to? Um, or do you prefer to, so, or you would prefer to just continue it till Mr. Brown comes back? Mrs. Santos?
I would prefer until Mr. Brown comes back, yes.
Okay.
I agree.
Everybody okay with that? All right.
Yes.
So, uh, we need a motion to continue till the next regular council meeting.
So moves.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Uh, number 10, uh, communication of Will Cronin, operations of facility management reference to campground opening. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Frank. Uh, we did have Mr. Frank. Thank you, Mrs. Santos, for, for keeping me straight. Um, we do have Mr. Frank. Sorry, Mr. Frank. He wants to speak on, uh, the beach operating plan. Uh, just unmute Mr. Frank. And again, I do apologize. Your name and address for the record, please.
Lawrence Frank, 8 O'Donnell Road. I think I'll put this off till when Mr. Brown returns.
All right, Mr. Frank. Thank you so much. Okay, number 10, uh, communication of Will Cronin, operations of facility management reference to campground opening. This is a new item.
Motion to receive said communication. Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to receive. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, discussion. So, um, just real quick, I, I had, um, I had, uh, asked to move this one up on the docket when, when Wendy A. was reviewing the docket with me only for, because we typically take things in order, only because I assumed at the time the beach operating plan was going to be discussed and we could kind of talk about it together. Um, so I just wanted to, for, 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 for clarity and transparency reasons, that's why that one is right next to that one, uh, right next to the beach. So having said that, there was discussion last meeting about, uh, campground rates and, you know, potentially keep, uh, expanding the dates of the campground. And we come to find out that the campground manager could not, uh, does not have enough previous notice to be able to come up here because he comes from Florida. Um, and he does a really good job, by the way. Um, and to meet that timeline of the opening at the beginning of May. Um, however, uh, I personally certainly in favor of extending it, but, um, that's kind of where this lies. Um, uh, Council Flynn?
Yes?
I thought you had your hand up.
Oh, I think I was coughing into my arm. I had put myself on mute. My apologies.
Oh, okay.
But thank you.
You're welcome. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do you want to, uh, again, continue this till, uh, the next meeting? Or do you want to, um, it's just not possible. So
It's not possible.
For him to open up on the 15th. Okay.
Mr. President?
Um, uh, hang on, Terry.
Yep.
Peter?
I, I don't know that there's anything you need to act on. I, I think if, if you could have opened early, that you might have been acting on that.
Okay.
And, and I, at least, and in discussions with Mr. Cronin, I think this could be discussed when we discuss the overall operations plan, there may be a possibility if we can't open early of, of, of staying open later, which was also something that was discussed by the council.
Didn't we, didn't we at the last meeting though say that we would open early? Yes. Yes, we did. So don't we have to act to, to say no that we
If they could.
Won't do it this time? I thought we, I thought a motion passed.
Okay, I, I didn't realize it, that that had been made in that formal way. So yeah, you may want to take a motion to open on the
Yeah, we do need a motion. Uh, Council Flynn?
That was my concern, that when we made the motion, we actually specified dates and, uh,
Okay.
The solicitor just clarified. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, um, it has to be in the affirmative. So it would have to be to be able to open, um,
On May 15th.
On May 15th. Okay.
The closure.
The closure, we already determined that. Yeah.
With the last motion.
So we have an op, we have a motion and a second. I'll second it to, um, open on May 15th. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Okay, thank you. Um, we have, uh, 11, 12, and 13, which we actually, um, gave Sean the authority to go ahead, um, from a timing perspective at the last meeting, uh, to apply for certain grants. Um, again, I would motion to, or, or I would ask the council to, um, th, this is a big project and there could be potentially a lot of dollars. So last meeting, personally, I, my own opinion, one of seven, I was okay having him going forward from a, from a grant and a time sensitive perspective. Um, but to get into this all here without him here, I think that, uh, I don't think that's fair. And I think that, uh, we need to continue this. It would be my, my opinion. I just want to note the pleasure of the rest of the councilists.
Is that okay, Peter? That's number 11. That's number 11 and 12.
11, 12. Uh, I'll read them individually to, uh, Council Flynn?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is just a question because when we met and discussed this at the last meeting, uh, the town administrator commented that he could submit it to meet the April 7th deadline, if I recall correctly, and he could always withdraw it if that was the pleasure of the council not to go forward with it. So my question is, is there a deadline for that withdrawal if that were to be the pleasure of the council, once we get all the information?
I, I don't think, uh, just my opinion and Peter, maybe you want to help?
It's, it's
I don't think there's any
Nothing imminent.
Right.
So there, there would be time to wait to have a, a full discussion on it, uh, before the council makes the decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you. So I'm gonna read each one individually and we'll just motion to continue each one, okay? Memorandum of Town Engineer Through Town Administrator Reference to Availability of Funding to Support Maaford River Flood Mitigation.
Motion to continue. Second.
Uh, to continue to the, um, next regularly scheduled meeting, May 3rd?
May 3rd, all right.
Okay.
Motion to continue to the meeting of May 3rd.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution of the council in reference to authorizing the town engineer to work with the planning department to prepare and submit grant application, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, National Coastal Resilient Fund.
Motion to pass resolution to the next meeting. So, second.
Listen to continue.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, I have a motion and a second to continue to May 3rd. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and number 13, resolution of the council in reference to authorizing the town engineer to work with the planning department to prepare and submit grant application, Southeast New England Program, SNAP.
Motion to continue.
Okay, we have a motion in a, in a second to continue to May 3rd. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I like how this is flowing this evening. Okay, number 14, email communication of Arthur Weber, resignation from the Quinick Island Planning Commission.
Motion to receive said resignation with regret. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, to receive with, uh, resignation with regret and ought we thank you for your service on the Quinick Island Planning Commission. Um, I have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number 15, appointment of two members to the Middletown Planning Board, two vacancy terms expiring February 2024.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This time I'd like to appoint Paul Coche to reappoint him and also Betty Jane Owen as a reappointment.
Okay, are there any further nominations? Okay. What's that?
Your second?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Vandos. So Yes, Mrs. Flynn?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I appreciate that because I, I think it was great to see, uh, residents applying to the various boards and commissions. As you know, I always encourage, uh, applications to flow in. And I support the nomination that Mrs. Santos, uh, read. As the other applicant, um, he had not attended a planning board meeting and does seem very engaged as a volunteer for many other local nonprofits, which is all very good work. Um, the applicant was interviewed well, had an impressive resume. Uh, and I, I'd like to invite, you know, that applicant and, and any resident, any Middletown resident to, uh, apply to the planning board or other boards or commissions of interest, uh, in the future. Please get involved.
Okay, thank you, Council Flynn. So we have a mo, uh, nomination for reappointment for Paul Croce and Betty Jane Owens, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And as Council Flynn stated, I think, uh, Mr. Hutler, I would certainly encourage you or anyone else to, uh, to continue to, uh, apply for boards. Um, enjoyed, uh, enjoyed talking with you that evening. Let's move on to the public forum. Uh, public forum is number 16, and I'll read that into the record. Pursuant to Rule 25 of the Rules of the Council, citizens may address the town on one subject only, said subject of substantive town business, neither discussed during the regular meeting nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must either drop off a public participation request at town hall or email to both Wendy Marshall, uh, and Karen Clancy at MiddletownRI.com at least 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during the, this session will not be voted upon, no longer than 15 minutes total for the public forum. Um, and we do have somebody that wants to speak at the public forum, and that is, uh, Michael Cunningham. Michael, can you raise your hand, please? Just, uh, your name and address for the record, sir.
Michael Cunningham, 21 Alston Avenue. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, so I had a four-minute letter that I was gonna read, uh, but I'm not gonna read it. I'm gonna try and get it done in like I'm going to try and get it done in like 30 seconds. This is in regards to recusals and short term rentals. I've had a number of conversations with the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, great conversations. He and I have agreed, I've shown him some video, that this is a very complex issue for for two of our councils and our solicitor at times. And I would encourage the council, I'm not saying anyone's done anything wrong or correct, I'm just saying that I would encourage them to reach out to the Ethics Commission in writing and request a letter of opinion on what they should involve themselves with or with not. That's not their solicitor, he doesn't need to do that. The council can control his actions. And that way, there's absolutely no risk of of a conflict of interest. It's very sticky, the as we saw in the last meeting, this, you know, the the meeting could be going one way and then it goes another way and now it puts, you know, a council in possibly a a position they didn't intend to be on. So I just, I would encourage the counselors to get that letter and then they're really in the clear. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. There's nobody else, right? Okay, excellent. Okay, let's move on to number 17, which is budget related. Number 17, receipt of the FY 2021-2022 budget.
Motion to receive said fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And basically, all we're doing tonight is just just from a timing perspective, just receiving this. I would encourage all counselors, if you have any questions before we start the budget process, to get with Mark, get with Sean. You know, we are going to probably sit on a Saturday, so be prepared for that unless you you decide you want to do something else. I know in the past, we've knocked it out one day. We've had some really good lunches and some really good conversations. So I think that, you know, unless you want to do it in segments, I've done that in the past and it seems drawn drawn out. I prefer to.
Meetings too long.
Yeah, and it and it makes the meetings long also because we would typically do it at a five or not, we would do an hour or two for consecutive meetings beforehand or we just we just knock it out on a Saturday. But I, one thing I do would like to do is everyone has their their binders this evening with the with the capital improvement, the smaller binder and the larger binder is the the proposed municipal budget. So I would begin to review that. Any questions? You know, again, we'll take whatever time we need to take on it, but we want to make sure, one, we get it right and there's a there's a solid understanding from everybody. You know, but again, a lot of those questions, if they're going to be answered beforehand, especially Chris, you and I've had conversation recently that once we realize you're going to be the next counselor that, you know, you're eager to get going and with the budget or any other issue to get up to speed on. So that certainly curtails some time for us, not that we're looking to rush through it. Again, we'll take the time we need to, but we need to make sure we all do our homework on it, okay?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Santos.
What you are suggesting tonight, that if, once we go through the budget, that if you have any questions, rather than do it at the meeting, take it before the either the finance director or the town administrator, is that your?
Yeah, so you can do it either way. You can do it before before we even have budget meetings or after we have our budget meetings, we'll have two public hearings, the first first one and then the second one where we potentially adopt the budget. Having said that, you know, as smooth as this can go, that's kind of what we're looking for, but we want to make sure we spend the time and everyone has a great understanding of it and all questions get answered. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Will we be hearing from each of the department heads again this year?
Yes, we will do that. If that's what you guys, the pleasure of the council is, would like to do it again on a Saturday where they the department heads come before and kind of give an overview of of their budget. And then, you know, if we can review that beforehand and, you know, typically that's what we've done over the years is just kind of review the budget beforehand. There'll be a schedule of who's coming on those days or what times and, you know, that way, any pre questions are potentially answered and, you know, if they have any detail, we have any detailed questions, which I'm sure there will be, and that's the way it should be, you know, that that we can get through that, okay? And again, not looking to rush through it, just looking to make it as as seamless and as smooth as possible.
Thank you, sir.
With with an understanding that everybody has a great understanding of it so they can answer questions of the constituents, okay? Okay, so we have a motion in a and Wendy, as far as a schedule for the budget. Yeah, I'd like to, if we could get some dates out there to the counselors to see what works, Saturday works or any other dates that would work. Like to make sure that we if we can get that out there now so that we can start lining up our, you know, their schedules, you know, so we can have that balance going on. And then we can respond and we come to a consensus at the next meeting, hopefully maybe, because next meeting, we're in May and we typically adopt by the end of May. So, you know, from a timing perspective, we need to get on it, okay? We have a motion in a second to receive. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 18, communication of Rosemary K. Cregger, Superintendent of Schools in reference to Middletown Public School Budget Fiscal Year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 in accordance with Article 8, Section 812 of our town charter.
Motion to receive said communication. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is Rosemary on? She is? Yeah, Rosemary, can you raise your hand or do you want to make a comment? Is she there, Karen? Yeah, she there, she is. Rosemary, if you could just unmute, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you, Rosemary Cregger, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations, Paul, and congratulations, Tom, on your election. Look forward to working with you as we move forward in the town. This is, my communication is typical of a transmittal to you from our school committee regarding our budget. So the memo speaks for itself and I look forward to a communication with all of the counselors to discuss the our budget. I know that our school committee chair, Teresa Spangler, will be reaching out to you to meet and discuss any questions you might have regarding our request. Thank you.
Rosemary, I have two words for you. Thank you and likewise. And I would encourage the counselors to any questions they have about the school budget, that's where most of the 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 town dollars lie, to, you know, reach out to Rosemary and or Teresa and, you know, any questions you have to gain a better understanding of of the request, the budget from the school committee and the school department. I think certainly, again, it would certainly streamline, again, not that we're looking to rush it, but it would make it a smoother transition and everyone to have a a better understanding, hopefully, okay?
And I would be willing to sit down with Mr. Logan, our new town council member, to review the budget with him in more detail.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Logan, please reach out to us.
I will. Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. So we have a motion, any further discussion with any counselors? Again, we're just receiving this this evening and now it's time to get to work on these on the budgets, okay? I suggest taking good notes and with any questions you have and get those questions answered and let's move it along. We have a motion in a second to receive said communication. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, motion to, I'm sorry, Mrs. Santos.
Motion to act as a board of license commission.
Okay, we have a motion to act as a board of license commission. We have a second. Okay, we have a second, a motion in a second to act as a board of license commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So acting as a board of license commission. Number 19, application of Food Love Market, Middletown LLC DBA, Food Love Market, 1037 Aquinic Avenue for a Class BV liquor license for use at the same premises. This requires advertising for a future public hearing and a notification to all required butters.
Motion to receive application advertised for public hearing to be held on May 3rd, 2021 and notify all butters. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to receive and advertise for a May 3rd meeting and notify butters. Is there any discussion? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, number 20, application to KVG LLC DBA Rock Lobster, 59 Aquinic Avenue for a Class BV liquor license for use at same premises. This is new. It requires advertising for a future public hearing and notification to all butters.
Motion to receive application advertised for public hearing to be held on May 3rd, 2021 and notify all butters. Second.
We have a motion in a second to receive application and advertise for a public hearing for May to be held on May 3rd, 2021 and notify all butters. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hear and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody oppose? Excellent, thank you.
Motion to reconvene as town council. Second.
Okay, a motion in a second to reconvene as town council. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we move to the consent calendar. And believe it or not, we have three items on the consent calendar. And
Easy ones.
Easy ones, and I would like to with pull off all three.
Second.
So so we have a motion in a second to pull off items 21, 22, and 23. So having said that, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 21, at the request of the Middletown Tree Commission, resolution of the council in reference to proclamation in honor of Arbor Day, April 30th, 2021. Really, council action to pass said pass said resolution. So but having said that, I thought it was important to read each of these in and I've asked Counselor Toronto to read, Counselor Logan to read 22. I've asked Counselor, because he's, it's a military month and he's a veteran, he's our only veteran on the council, to my knowledge. I've asked Counselor Toronto to read in number 23, which is the Fair Housing Month. I think that's that's important and if I can find 21, I'd like to read or if one of the councils prefer to read 21 in, that would be that would be fantastic. So having said that, I just want to make it, you know, I was talking to to a counselor today and they said, you know, these things tend to kind of get lost in the shuffle on on, it was Counsel Flynn, actually, and tend to get lost in in the consent calendar and some of them are important, like, you know, and when we get to, Chris reads the 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 proclamation of of the military child, month of the military child, it's, you know, those things get lost, like, how many times a school child has to move in their K through 12? And we kind of don't think about those things. So kind of just bring that those things to light and and so I think that's important. So having said that, I'm going to read the proclamation in honor of Arbor Day, whereas Rhode Island has celebrated Arbor Day for over 130 years and whereas Arbor Day and tree planting activities are a wholesome and inexpensive way to acknowledge and reaffirm future prospects of a community and whereas the celebration of Arbor Day is a meaningful way to celebrate springtime and introduce schoolchildren to local government and whereas the town of Middletown acknowledges the tremendous and vital contribution that trees and our tree commission make to our quality of life in the community. So therefore be it resolved, the town council, the town of Middletown, speaking on behalf of all of its citizens, recognized Arbor Day, April 30th, 2021 in the in the community and witness thereof where we have here on to set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Middletown to be affixed this 19th day of April, AD 2021.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. It needs further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for bearing with me with that. So number 21, number 22, at the request, I'm sorry, yes, at the request of School Superintendent Rosemary K. Cregger, resolution of the council in reference to proclamation in honor of Military Child of the Month in April 21, 2021, purple up for military kids.
I believe Counsel Flynn would like to.
You have to just make a motion to pass it.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Flynn.
If I could, before the proclamation is read in by Counselor Logan, if I could just say a couple of words, I'd like a shout out to Superintendent Cregger for submitting this proclamation and additional shout outs to the Middletown Prevention Coalition and Frosty Freeze. Their collaboration provided every K through 12 military student a certificate for a free Frosty Freeze Sunday, Middletown Sunday with blue and white sprinkles. It looks like this. The certificate reads, Military Kids Serve Too. We support military kids in Middletown. And this is the community of Middletown going the extra mile to show appreciation to those families who go the extra mile for the lifestyle that we all enjoy. So Middletown is grateful for you in April 21 and every month and every year thereafter. Thank you for all that you do. Mr. President?
Thank you, Terry. I think, thank you for 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 making that contribution there. Mark and Kim do a fantastic job of 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 supporting this and a lot of other, you know, requests that they get. So we certainly appreciate Mark and Kim from Frosty Freeze and of course, the military children. Having said that, Chris, if you'd
Absolutely.
Read that in, that'd be fantastic.
So before I read it in, just a couple of comments real fast. Having lived this lifestyle, we always talk about sacrifice of the service member, right? It's always on the top of everybody's mind. But what the real sacrifice is, is the family members that get left behind and that service member deploys. Every time they move to a new location, they have to reestablish roots and build those friendships over and over again. It's very wearing, wearing down on those families. They do such a wonderful job and there's great services for them to take advantage of. I'm happy that we're bringing it to the forefront. I think this is just the start to what we can do to show appreciation to those military members and their spouses and children to let them know that we appreciate what they do for us and that we want to give back to them. So with that said, I'm going to pause there, I'm going to start reading the proclamation. Across our nation and here in the state of Rhode Island, children in the military families sacrifice much in order to allow their parents to serve our nation and protect our liberty. In this month of April, people are encouraged to show support for our military and veterans' childrens and to thank them for their strength and the sacrifices they have made and continue to make. And there are approximately 2 million military children in the United States, with 1.2 million being school aged. The average military student faces transition challenges more than twice during high school and most military children attend six to nine different school systems from kindergarten through the 12th grade. Taking care of our military children sustains our nation's fighting force and strengthens the health and safety of our nation's families and communities. The Middletown School District serves approximately 600 military connected students, amounting to 26.5% of the student population. April 21st is also Purple Up for Military Kids Day. The month of April is a time to recognize the service and sacrifice of our military members, their families, and especially their children. They deserve our support. Now, therefore be it that the town council of the town of Middletown hereby proclaims this month of April as the month of the military child in Rhode Island and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. In witness thereof, we have here on to set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Middletown to be affixed to this 19th day of April, AD 2021.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris. And thank you, Terry. So having said that, Rosemary Cregger would like to speak. So, Rosemary, if you can come on in and unmute, we appreciate it. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Rosemary Cregger, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for reading this proclamation. The school committee did one as well and we did receive a proclamation from our, the House of Representatives, the proclamation or resolution sponsored by Deb Ruggiero. Just want to let you know that if you drive across the bridge on Psychonic Bridge on April 21st, the lights on the April 21st, the lights on the bridge will be purple. We have worked with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, and those lights will be purple, for, purple up for our military students. So, thank you for taking the time to recognize our military students. They are important fabric, and a part of our community, and always have been in our schools. So, thank you once again.
Okay, thank you, Rosemarie. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to pass the said resolution. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 23. At the request of the Community Housing Resource Board Housing Hotline, resolution of the council in reference to proclamation, Fair Housing Month in Town, and, Mrs. Santos.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I've asked councillor Toronto to read the Fair Housing Month, because I thought it was only appropriate that, since he was the chairperson of the, of the housing committee, that he continues on with his, his housing efforts.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And I do want to say that, you know, this is a focus of mine, and also the council, as we, we've spoken in regards to, you know, keeping Middletown affordable and helping our neighbors, especially these days. You need to take care of your neighbors, help your neighbors, the quality of life, and, and this is just a commitment that we should make as a town, to always focus on fair housing. And so, this is the fair housing of the month in the Town of Middletown, whereas this April is the 53rd anniversary of Fair Housing Month, in which US law was established that prohibited discrimination in housing. And whereas, the HUD Secretary, Marcia Fudge, states that Fair Housing Month is a time to recommit our nation's obligation to ensure that everyone has equal access to safe, affordable housing. And whereas, the Town of Middletown, as a grantee of Community Development Block Grants, CDBG Fund, is obligated to, obligated by the CDBG program to prepare and implement a plan of actions to affirmatively further fair housing for each CDBG program year. And whereas, the Town of Middletown has a longstanding history of supporting efforts to affirmatively furthering fair housing. And whereas, the Town of Middletown acknowledges and supports Housing Hotline, and the Community Housing Resource Boards work with the people of the community to resolve housing concerns and find warmth and shelter in whichever way one may seek. And whereas, the global pandemic has increased the number of individuals and families experiencing the overwhelming stress of housing insecurity. And whereas, each person has the right to a home, to a safe, healthy retreat, free from discrimination. Therefore be it resolved, that the Town Council of Middletown hereby proclaims the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the town, and calls upon all citizens to make a concerted effort to give aid to those who are seeking clean and pleasant surroundings for their lives. And we're, in witness whereof, we, we have hereunto, unto, set our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Middletown to be affixed this 19th day of April, AD 2021.
Excellent, thank you, Dennis. So, we have a motion and a second to pass said resolution, and again, you know, not just the fair housing, the military, and the Arbor Day, it's, it's nice to bring those things to light, and to cast some light on them, because they're important issues, and the sacrifices that are made, and the commitments, and the dedication from each and every one of those. So, having said that, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to licenses and permits. Number 24, application of T-Mobile Northeast LLC DBA, T-Mobile, 99 East Main Road, for a holiday license for the 2021-2022 licensing year. This is new.
Motion to grant said license.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this, on this request for like, holiday license? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, number 25. Application for a special event permit from Rhode Island Arts Foundation at Newport Incorporated, DBA Newport Music Festival, for a classical music concert to be held at the Norman Bird Centuary on Friday, July 9th, 2021, 5:15 a.m., that is not a typo, and Friday, July 16th, 2021, at 5:15 a.m.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion about the 5:15 starting time in this concert? It's not amplified. You know, I think it's, I think it's pretty cool that they're doing this. You know, the Bird Century is just always a great, great resource for our residents, educationally, and just, you know, just aesthetically. So, having said that, if there's no discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, number 26. Application for special event permit from Reverend Shelley Dungan, I hope I got that right, Shelley, of the Sacred Center at St. Mary's Church for Yoga on the Beach, to be held at Third Beach, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., and Monday through Friday, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., mid-June to early September.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I certainly know I have some discussion on this, just from the perspective, and Shelley's on, and Karen, can we bring Shelley in? Because she could probably answer these questions. Shelley, if you could raise your hand, and also, facilities and grounds manager, Will Will, if you just could unmute, and just state your name and position for the record?
Will Cronin, Operations Facilities Manager.
And you had your hand up, Will?
Yeah, just to, just to show that I was here. I'm happy to hear any questions.
Okay. I guess, I, I do have a question, and I don't know if you can answer it, or Shelley can answer it. I have no issue with it. I've certainly done a 180, after some of the responses we received for items, for recreation on the beach, as far as yoga and, and boot camps and stuff like that. But I'm a little concerned, my only concern is 8:30 a.m., but at that point, the beach is open. I was just wondering if Shelley could maybe take a look at that time, and maybe have it earlier, or get off the beach, I hate to say get off the beach, but finish up that session before the beach opens up.
No, that, that's a, a great catch, and she has said that she would be happy to pull back to 8 o'clock.
Okay. And the beach opens at 8?
Yeah, the beach operations started at 8 a.m., yep.
Okay. Shelley, are you on? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you. And I, and I had the same catch, and I did note, Will, in your email, as part of the package for the special event permits for the next three request applications, actually, that you said, you know, that the class would be finished by 8. Now, when we approved some of the preseason up through Memorial Day special event permit applications back in March, we had the end time at 7:45, to make sure that they were, you know, off the beach, out of the parking lot, or, you know, so that beach business could start. So, I just wanted to clarify, so we, we all agree what the best practice might be, as to what time the classes should end. Should it be 8? Should it be 7:45 or something different, whatever the council as well is?
Okay. I think I have my microphone on now. Are you able to hear me at this time?
We can, Shelley. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Reverend Shelley Dungan, 124 Corey Lane, Middletown.
Shelley, just, some of the, some of the discussions, short discussion resolved, revolved around the time, and Will clarified that. We just wanted to make sure that you're good with that, instead of 8:30, if you could pull back to 8?
Yes, yes, that works just fine. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Does any council, does any, any questions of Shelley? Councillor Toronto?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to just mention that, I know one of the concerns that we had when we were talking about these camps, is that they're getting off of the beach. You know, there was a parking issue, they'd stay on the beach, and I know that we've talked to these groups and said, look, it's your responsibility to monitor that the people who are going to these classes need to depart the beach on time, so we can open it up. I mean, if they've got a sticker, and they want to hang out at the beach, it's great. But I think that was a concern that some folks were happy.
Yep. Shelley, did you hear councillor Toronto's concern?
Yes, I did, and I'm very happy to remind people at the conclusion of class that they need to leave right away. I typically have done that in the past, but I can make a concerted effort to announce that at the end of every class, and if they don't have a sticker, they need to depart swiftly and immediately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Vaughn-Villis.
Yeah, my only concern is that if you take a look at these applications, they have different times, and it would seem to me that it would be better to be consistent.
Let's see, well, my, my organization has consistency with the starting time, both in the morning and in the evening, but are you making reference to the others who are using the beach for different forms of exercise, other than the gentle community yoga that I teach?
I think what, what Shelley's saying is the other two applicants that we're going to ta, take up here in a few minutes, they're both at 5:30 to 7:30 a.m., where hers is, you know, 7 to, or 7 to 8 o'clock, or 6:30, going to be 8 o'clock, whatever it is. So, she's saying that she's consistent with her times. Your question was, is, what, what is your question? Is it, you want them all to be the same time?
Well, my concern is monitoring. I mean, someone, an administrator, our department head, is going to be monitoring this, I mean, they're not just going to let it open-ended, and it would seem to me that it would be a lot easier if all of them had the consistent ending time, so that, you know, Will, or whoever is, is there, doesn't have to be thinking, oh my goodness, this is an 8 o'clock person, or this is a 7:30 person, do you know what I mean? It's, it's too...
Okay. Understood. Councillor Welch?
Thank you. I'd just like to say the same thing to Terry's point. If we said 7:45 before, that should be the time. I mean, we have to be consistent.
Okay. So, what's the, what's the pleasure of the council? You want to make them all off the beach at 7:45?
I would think the same, the same time is better, 7:45, whatever it is, 7:45, whatever it is, it should be consistent time.
I agree, and I, I think, I don't want to push Shelley another 15 minutes, but if the beach opens at 8, and you were done at 7:45 by the time you picked up your stuff and got to your car, and you weren't going to stay, you'd have time to get out.
Shelley, are you listening, following the discussion? Shelley, you're muted, if you could just unmute?
I would be glad to comply, and as Will can attest, I've been flexible with the town. This will be my 13th summer of serving the community by teaching yoga on the beach, and I'm always willing to flex and do whatever it takes to make things run smoothly, so I'll, I'll end class at 7:45.
Excellent, Shelley, thank you. And I think, Will, for beach purposes and beach personnel, certainly, I think it's a good point, Mrs. Vaughn and Terry, that you put that together, and, and for consistency purposes, and that it's much easier to monitor, instead of not knowing which one, which, which group is on till which time. So, good points. Okay, so, any further questions of, of, of this permit? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to grant said special event permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yep, at 7:45, yep. Thank you, Shelley, and councillors. Okay, number 27. Application for special event permit, permit for Elevate Fitness, for Elevate Fitness Beach Boot Camp at Second and/or Third Beaches, Tuesdays and Thursdays, beginning May 18th, 2021, through September 2nd, 2021, 5:30 a.m. to 7:30 a.m.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion? You want to join?
No.
Heard you're going to be out there at 5:30.
I'm doing something else with somebody else.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A.m.?
A.m., yes. They do these boot camps early in the morning.
Okay.
All right? Maybe you should consider joining. So, Mrs. Flynn?
So, they're going to be finished at 7:30, so, it's 7:45 or earlier, is the, is going to be the policy for beach activity to be finished? Fine.
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. Excellent. Okay. So, any further discussion on Elevate, Mrs. Permit?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one thing, in, in my discussions, I think with, with Mr. Brown last week, I think his recommendation, and Mr. Cronin can probably confirm this, is that where some of these boot camps have previously operated at Surfers End, that they wanted to move them from Surfers End to other portions of the beach, so, and maybe Will can confirm that, but, but the, in making the motion, he maybe just want to make sure that the town has discretion to choose the area of the beach where these camps will operate.
Okay. Mr. Kewa?
Two points. Number one, both committees are well aware of the COVID restrictions in regards to the given activities. Also, I spoke with Will Cronin today about the location and moving that away from Surfers End, and Will can comment on that as well, where those locations are going to be for both of these boot camps.
Okay. Will, you found the discussion about where moving it from Surfers End to the east side of the Big Rock, towards no man's land?
Yeah, correct, and I'll, I'll work with the vendors, with the, the parties, to make sure that they're in the right spot, and we'll designate with a, with a post, something that, that's, you know, easy to recognize for their, for their area, and that way, it'll give the Surfers End folks who want to go for a walk, or start their walk, or have a chat, you know, room to be there and enjoy the beach without being in the way of the, the folks that are, are running a fit camp.
Okay, excellent. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to grant said special event permit for Elevate Fitness.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 28. Application for a special event permit for Pulse Gym in Studios for Pulse Beach Boot Camps at Second Beach, Surfers End, Tuesday and Thursdays, beginning June 8th, 2021, through October 1st, 2021, 5:30 a.m. to 7:30 a.m.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and, Will, you're going to have the same conversation with the Pulse Beach Boot Camp folks about moving the location east of the Big Rock to no man's land?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. The council's good with that? Excellent. Okay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 29. Memorandum, Karen Rock, in reference to codifying council resolution sidewalks.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I believe Karen's on, and Karen would like to speak. I did have the pleasure of serving on the council with Karen from 2002 to 2004, and she actually brought this Esplanade sidewalk concept that we adopted at the time to the council. And so, I think Karen lives down in that area, where the sidewalks are going on from Purgatory, on Purgatory Road, from Aquinic to Second Beach, and I think that certainly reignited her, her passion for Esplanade-type sidewalks from a safety perspective. I have read her, her email communications, and Karen, if you're on, welcome, your name and address for the record, and, and love to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Congratulations as well. Um... Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Congratulations as well. Um, and, and I'm, and I'm, uh, my name is Karen Rourke. I live at 26 Renfrew Avenue in Middletown. And I want to, it just occurred to me, as you mentioned, thank you for reading the email I sent. I'm trying to not, um, take up too much of your busy council time. But I, I'm not sure if Council Logan was able to receive that because I sent it to the, to the town council.
I did receive it, Mrs. Rourke.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Hello. Um, so, um, I, I, like all of my missive say, share, um, I do believe that these sidewalks are the best. And I think that the photos I showed you of the town roads that have had them for years, obviously the town founders have thought that they were a good idea too. Um, and if Teresa remembers, she and I walked up and down, um, West Main Road with the DOT to the engineers on that freezing cold day to make sure that where it could be allowed, that we did put those grass strips. Since the time of passing this, um, resolution, there are two other things that I thought of that should be in the resolution. Whereas now that we have pay as you throw, we have those big garbage bins. And if you've ever driven down Aquidnic Avenue on a garbage day, um, there really isn't much room for anybody once those bins are on, on the sidewalk. So that's one more reason to have the Esplanade strips. And as well as snow, as we have more and more snow, when the snow plows go by, they leave a giant mound. And if the mound is, if the sidewalk is up to the curb, the mound of snow and salt and gravel is on the sidewalk instead of being able to drain through the grass. And the people who have to shovel the sidewalk, if you, it's the ordinance that you must shovel your sidewalk. If the sidewalk has a chance against the snow, if it's just the snow that's falling and not all the snowplow, as you know, that stuff is getting harder and harder, um, as I get older to shovel through. So those are the two things in addition. And basically it's, it's completely up to your, your discretion. This, I thought that when we passed this resolution unanimously on my last council meeting, um, that if the town resolved to do something, that then it would move forward. It had the town administrators memo attached and approved at that meeting. And so every time there's sidewalks discussion in town, um, when I'm early enough, not like what's happened in front on, uh, West Main, uh, East Main and, um, the, in front of the police station and now on Cottington, I bring my resolution. I'm like, but the resolution and, and what, what resolution? And I just, I guess, um, that I, I, I didn't know, I thought when we talked about being a town counselor that you, the council makes the priorities and then the town administration administers them. But somehow my naivete or just my, you know, blanketness, um, it didn't make it into the code. It didn't take that next step. It needs to be an ordinance. I was finally, someone explained to me, I think it was Ron, our fantastic planner, um, he said it's got to be codified as an ordinance and then it could be in the code book. So then when, uh, designers come and, you know, we hire people to engineer new roads, then they can, um, they'll see that this is our preference. So this is, I stayed up late past my bedtime to thank you very much for all your work. I've, I'm here because I, um, want to make sure that if you had any questions, I could answer them or any concerns I could address. But basically the resolution is, is, is passed and it's up to you, this council, whether or not you want it to become a part of our ordinances and into the code book. And if you agree with me that they're a fantastic idea for the town of Middletown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. You're welcome.
So, um, Peter and Bill, I'm not sure, um, exactly where design is. I, I know there's some, later on, there's some, uh, there's some, uh, change orders for those sidewalks.
It's, I don't know.
So the state, as far as I think what we should do is just, you know, Bill, if we can make note of this and, and get it to Sean, if that's what the council desires, to at least look at it. I don't know if, what the cost is involved. I don't know any of that. I don't know if it, if it, uh, how far it would push it back, if it would have to go to redesign. I, I don't know. So it's cer- certainly something we can ask. And I think that we just, we just asked Sean to do it. Um, they are, from a safety perspective and for all the reasons that Karen stated, they do make sense. But, you know, the state may come back and say, hey, look, we have this much money and that's it. So I, I don't know. Unless the town wants to contribute more. We don't have enough information to make a, make a, an informed decision. So, uh, Terry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so you're referring specifically to the sidewalks on Purgatory?
Yes.
So, yeah, that right now is, uh, I happened to go to the public, uh, hearing and listen in and I think I'm right. If Karen's still on and I'm wrong, she can jump in. But I think right now they're simply going to find out where public property ends and private property begins. And they're going to still work with the designers to see what the options for the type of sidewalks are, see how much space they have. Cause there's some cherry tree issues and other things to talk about. Um, I think what, uh, Karen was referring to was a broader umbrella, uh, ordinance that would be applied, uh, or, and, and noticed whenever sidewalks are put in the town for Esplanade sidewalks to be a consideration. And that might be a, you know, is that something, you know, the solicitor can weigh in on is if we are allowed to do that and what section of our code book would that go in? Uh, or is that even possible?
Well, we do have, um, design standards for roads and sidewalks in the subdivision regulations. Um, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall, um, whether they require Esplanade sidewalks. I don't, I don't know that they do, but that would be something that perhaps the planning board could look at. You know, obviously the situation is sometimes different with a, a new road where you've got the ability to, uh, you know, with a new right of way, you've got the space to put in Esplanade strips and sidewalks, depending on the width of the road. It's sometimes you don't have all that flexibility. But for example, with Purgatory, we may not know whether we have the ability to put this type of a sidewalk in until we have a sense of how wide the, the town's property is and how much room we have to work with. But, but certainly if, if there was a desire to, um, look at the design specs and, and criteria that we have, that would be something perhaps to refer to the planning board. Uh, because they're the ones that are approving sidewalk designs for new subdivisions and new roads as they, as they come forward.
Okay. Mrs. Santos.
Hi Karen, Teresa Santos. Nice talking to you again. I sometimes wish I had never started on sidewalks on Aquidnic Avenue. I, I really, really now thinking twice. Number one, Karen brought up the fact about the totes being on the sidewalks. Okay, that's true. I have seen them there. The thing that really blew me away was the past few weeks where the electric corporation was putting up new poles. Where did they put the new poles? On the sidewalks. Where are people supposed to walk? They walked on the street. Now, the thing that I'm getting concerned about is all these new sidewalks that are going in. There are many elderly people who cannot shovel out their sidewalks. I know one special person. When I got on email of two sisters who could not shovel, the elderly sisters who could not shovel their sidewalks, this person stepped in. And I thank him from the bottom of my heart. But people who are going to have new sidewalks in front of their homes should be made aware whether or not they're going to be responsible for shoveling the sidewalks. Some people can, some people can pay for them, but some cannot. Now, with that being said, I think once the sidewalks are in, we have to take in consideration of our senior citizens. And we're always talking about our seniors. And we have to do something about it. Not just put something in writing where they're responsible for cleaning out the sidewalks. Because once they're cleaned out, and this happened on Turner's Road, along comes a snowplow, fills in the sidewalk. What is the elderly person supposed to do? Pay again to have it sidewalk cleaned? I wish I had never started on sidewalks.
You all set?
Yes.
I think you've done a fine job pushing the issue in sidewalks.
Gee, thanks.
On the Clinic Avenue.
Thanks.
And you're going to see it come to fruition and be.
Well, I'll be, I'll be.
No, you won't.
I'll be in a jar.
No, you won't. You'll still be here. So.
You got Mr. Welch.
Uh, sorry, uh, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mrs. Santos, one of the ways that you can eliminate shoveling the sidewalk twice is to wait for the snow to stop.
I don't have sidewalks on my street, but.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying if people just wait, then you only have to do it once.
But if they can't do it, if they're elderly, they can't do it.
So what they do then is they call, uh, Mr. Brown's office and they get on a list so that the pleats farmer doesn't issue them any, any type of citation.
So there is a list that.
Yes, there is.
You can get it.
Yes, there is.
First I know about it.
Well, just ask me and I'll tell you. Just saying. I happen to have that answer.
But, uh, what I was after was I, I agree with, uh, Karen Rourke. I talked to her quite a bit. And though I have some concerns about the construction, um, I think it, it's good all the way around. So if someone needs to pick up the ball from Karen to, you know, try to get it to make an ordinance change, I will be willing to do that.
So I think what we need to do based on what I heard from Peter is, um, and again, it's going to be, you know, send it to the planning board for, let them take a look at it. And see what they come back with. I think that's the right avenue. They're, they're the ones approving those designs anyway, um, project by project. And again, uh, later on, we're going to take a look at a change order that's determining, um, you know, where private property ends and where town property, uh, begins or vice versa. And it may make sense to do it depending upon the width of each individual road where the sidewalk could potentially be. So I think that's what we do. So I'd, I'd like to, uh, yes, uh, Council Logan.
Just a new guy question. But if we codify this and put it as an ordinance, are we responsible to then go back and look at every sidewalk that was installed to get it up the code? Are we free and clear?
No, this would, in my, i- i- in all likelihood, this would be prospective going forward, uh, with regard to new sidewalks that go in. And there may be, you know, depending with the planning board, there may be a distinction between, uh, something that may be mandatory for new roads, but may be, uh, s- subject to feasibility with regard to existing roads. So.
Yeah, my concern is just best intentions sometimes have budget shortfall issues.
Yes, no doubt about it.
They put it on the table.
No doubt about it. So good question. Um, so is that, is the council good with that? Just forwarding this to the planning board to take a look at, um, possibly potentially adopting Esplanade sidewalks as a part of an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. We don't, Peter, we don't need a, uh, Wendy, we don't need a motion. We do need a motion for that. Okay, motion to forward to the planning board to take a look at, uh, uh, making, uh, Esplanade sidewalks part of the ordinance, part of an ordinance. Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, um, so we have some amended items here that we need to, uh, to work through, okay? Number 29A, memorandum of superintendent in reference to Gaudet School Track. So we have a motion and a second to receive. Um, all in favor? Is, uh, Rosemarie on? Rosemarie, can you raise your hand, please?
I'm on.
Okay, um, um, I've certainly read it. I'm sure the council's read it, but if, I would like to hear what you have to present, please.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, as you know, um, the school department entered into a partnership with Salve Regina University several years ago. And they, uh, at that time, they dug up our, uh, field, our football field, crossfield, soccer field, and put a turf field in. So that was, um, installed by Salve, full, full price, probably over a million dollars in the year 2009. When you look at the history, uh, at that time, we, our track, um, the track was resurfaced at the same time. Because doing the turf field and the tract, track at that time was really the best option, just as it is now when the tracks now being resurf- res- I mean, the turf field is being resurfaced. The original track was, uh, built around 1982. It was a 440 yard a- asphalt track. That's when we used to run those meters. Um, in the late 1980s, the track was seal coated with a tennis court type covering. Then the track was resurfaced in 2001 to create a 40 meter, uh, track. And then again, the track was resurfaced in 2009 at the time the turf field, uh, project was, uh, going on with Salve. A new track is being proposed for 2021. That would include the removal of the original two, uh, uh, two inch rubber track asphalt. In the memo, I talked about the average normal life expectancy of a track, which is 20 years. Our original track is approximately 28 years old and the average life before a resurfacing is required is about 10 years. So our resurfacings have lasted eight years the first time, 12 years, uh, this time. We have put the, uh, resurfacing of the track in our capital improvement plan, but we didn't have a funding source for it. We also, when Salve went out to bid for the turf and field, they asked us if we wanted to, uh, get a bid for the track renovation project, which they did get for us. When we, when I brought this to, uh, Mr. Brown's attention, um, we decided to go out for another bid, actually. Because when we met with the, uh, Salve folks and Cape and Island, uh, tennis and track, they suggested we probably could get a better price if we went out on our own. And indeed, that was the case. So, uh, our request is, um, for the town council to see if they could fund the resurfacing of the track. It would really, uh, complete the sports complex at, um, Gaudet School. We have, I watched that grass grow at the lacrosse fields. Uh, we had the baseball upgrades, uh, the new turf field and hopefully a new track. This facility is used not only for the schools, but it really is used, uh, a great deal by our, uh, public. And it's all about wellness in the community and for the community. So we keep those gates open. Uh, very different from some other areas where you have a turf field and a track and there's, uh, a gate, it's gated and really only open to the certain organizations where ours is open. The school department is, um, wants to set aside approximately $90,000 for the project. And tho- those dollars, uh, would come through the revenues we, we see in our cell tower, um, rentals. So that's, that's the, um, proposal. I hope you will consider this because again, it is for our community. It is about wellness for our community and it's an opportunity that Salve is now doing the field to get the track, um, reconditioned and resurfaced.
Okay. Any conversation or discussion amongst councilors? Mrs. Von Villas?
I'm just concerned that, um, the town administrator would need to look and see where the additional funds were coming from. So maybe we want to, we need to do this today? Can we put this till May 3rd?
Uh, Rosemarie, what's the, what's the timeline?
Uh, well, the lead time, we would like to start the work, uh, certainly the turf field's going to start after our graduation. This year, we will be having our graduation on the field rather than under the 10th because of the COVID, uh, situation. So we would like to start, um, the Salve piece of it right after, uh, graduation. That's maybe the sec- the third, fourth week of June. the sec- the third, fourth week of June. I know that Sean has asked our finance director from the town, Mr. Tanguay, to look at possible, uh, funding sources. So he might be available tonight to answer that.
Okay. Um, is Karen, is Mark on?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. This is Mark Tanguay, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mark. Mark, have you identified a funding source?
I've been in touch with the bond attorney, and she has approved that the funding could from the open space and recreation 2006 bond. She said we could use, this project would qualify for that bond proceeds.
Okay.
And she said we could also incorporate that into the current refunding that we're doing right now.
So when I, when I hear things like that, I, I'm encouraged. Um, however, um, I tend to wanna look at things holistically. So if that's available, um, I also look at other things that potentially at the same time, maybe we can, maybe we can get a few other things done too. I don't know how the council feels. I know that the, uh, the tennis courts, um, uh, are certainly in need of some, some, some repair. And also, um, we have some potential pickleball courts that, uh, we've talked about at the last meeting. So I don't know if the council's interested in something like that, Mark, or you have to go back to bond, bond council and potentially ask them, could all three of these be, been done? Uh, Dennis just, uh, showed me the, uh, the potential, uh, uh, Rosemarie, I think you put it in for 2022, was, uh, five hundred and some thousand as well for, uh, the tennis courts to be redone. So, you know, I don't know, you know, just thinking outside the box a little bit, um, a lot of money, but, um, y- you know, it's not going away, uh, and it's only gonna get more expensive. So ju- just a thought, Mark. Um, and Rosemarie?
Um, Mr. President, there is 775,000 of authorized and unissued debt on that bond.
Okay.
And I would have to get the bond attorney's, uh, approval for any projects.
Yeah, because both those projects together would certainly exceed that, that bond availability.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, Rosemarie, my suggestion is, uh, we bring this back at the next meeting for Sean. Um, and, uh, you know, Bill, if you can make some note of that, um, I, I, I would certainly be willing to, again, I'm one person to move forward on it, but I wanna make sure we have the solid funding sources and we have everything in place before we move forward with the vote of the council.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, I mean, if we could add the, uh, the extra, um, recreational pieces, that would be wonderful for our community, but we understand there is a, um, a bottom line here.
Okay. All right. Very good. We appreciate it, Rosemarie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, um, any council have any further discussion about, uh, about the track request? Uh, Counsel Welch?
I'd just like to say I agree, uh, that track is in constant use and, uh, whatever we gotta do to make it more efficient, if, if we throw in the tennis court same time, pickleball, whatever, whatever the numbers work out, I am for.
Okay. Excellent. Any further conversation? Uh, Counsel Logan?
Just again, as we're going through this to look at replacing this track, we know what the useful life is. We should start thinking about that future cost to the budget and start to factor that in, make it long-term. Stop thinking about this summer, start thinking about 10 summers from now.
Agreed. Good point. Okay. Um, so we would just need to make a motion to continue to the May 3rd meeting.
Go ahead. So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Everybody good with that? Awesome. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank, thank you, guys. Um, Town Council, continue from regular meeting, February 25th, 2021. Memorandum, memorandum of Counselor Flynn in reference to parking ordinance.
Motion to receive said memorandum. Second.
Okay, we have a second, uh, a motion in a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Terry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this agenda item was originally submitted, uh, back on February 9th, and the issue was withdrawn to assess the planning board workload with a motion for the issue to be revisited the second meeting of April, and that's tonight. The council has learned that the planning board is caught up with their workload, and Middletown has a parking problem. And part of that is highlighted in this ordinance that has not been updated for a number of years. For example, if you, uh, have the docket item on the second page where the ordinance starts, it's ordinance number 1304, that, um, one of the things that really jumps out is the very first entry where residential dwellings except elderly housing, minimum parking spaces, two spaces per dwelling. That's not per bedroom. There's not a per bedroom calculation. It's if you can build it, but you have to have two, you don't have to have more than two. That, I think that's something that the town might wanna take a look at as we are, um, collecting or having applications submitted, uh, for this ki- type of development. Um, let's see. The, uh, what the next line, it's a little offensive, elderly housing. I don't think that you see that word very much anymore. Typically, you wanna say senior, and one space for per dwelling unit. You know, by definition, senior is 55 and above. So for a number of years, uh, 10 to 20, there could be two people that are working, and that will probably be our future down the line, and there would be two cars for some senior housing locations. Further down, I mentioned it in my cover memo, banks and financial institutions, one of the highest number of spaces per thousand square feet of GFA, four per thousand. And, you know, this is a, an industry that is going more and more online and remotely. So I wanted to, you know, we are, as I say, more and more delivery services are being part of our everyday life, and the parking on the street is very limited. You know, we need this off-street parking, in my observation. Excuse me. Every application for development must accommodate parking, and it makes this ordinance review very time-sensitive as every application submitted, submitted follows the ordinances as of the date the application is submitted. So if the council agrees, the motion would simply be to forward the parking ordinance 1304 to the planning board for review of the uses and the appropriate parking.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on this? So Terry, your recommendation is to forward it to the planning board. Is that correct?
I'm asking if the town council would, uh, recommend that this be forwarded to the planning board. This is how I see it. If you, uh, if the council agrees and these points are valid, then that would be, take the next step.
So my, my own opinion is that when I look at this, I think you referenced some good points. Sometimes ordinances have, have been there for a long time. Um, you know, we have a lot going on in Middletown. Sometimes they're not looked at, um, until there's issues. Um, so, you know, when I look at a couple of the points you brought up, like residential dwellings, two spaces per dwelling versus, uh, bedrooms. Peter, how does this tie into, um, I can't help but think it and say it. Uh, we have a certain ordinance for short-term rentals. They live by a different set of, of parking, parking regu- regulations?
So these are the, the parking requirements or standards in the zoning code. We have a separate set of parking standards for short-term rentals, which is one space per bedroom. So if I have, if I just have a four-bedroom, single-family home that I live in myself or rent long-term, I need, only need to have two spaces. But if I'm renting it on a short-term basis, I would need to have four off-street parking spaces.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Counsel.
I'd just like to add to that. I mean, rental properties in Middletown, maybe we should be taking a look at and including those in there because when there's a Salve rental, they're one car per room in there right now. And you're saying they only need to have, you know, a minimum number of parking, but, I mean, we've gotta look at that because there's excessive parking going on for other rentals.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So I don't know why we're targeting just the short-term.
It's 'cause the, the, uh, the, um, you know, the short-term obviously doesn't cover the, you know, the, the Salve, the longer-term ones, right? So we probably, maybe I think it's a good idea to look at it.
But the general, the general, uh, parking standards are in the zoning code. So if we're gonna do a review and potentially change those, the, the process would be to send it to the planning board.
Okay.
For them to consider.
Yeah. Any, you guys good with that? Okay. So we need a motion to, uh, to, uh, uh, send this to the planning board for review.
So moved.
Okay, we have it, just like that. Presto. Thank you, Counsel Von Villas. Uh, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, excellent. Uh, number 31, Counselor, uh, memorandum of Counselor Welch, uh, Vice President Welch, in reference to short-term rental registration fee.
Motion to receive said memorandum. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor to receive?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. So basically, in all of the short-term rental discussions, uh, there was some question about the data that we used and, and what numbers were accurate. So what I was at, what I'm asking for here is that any number, whether it be a revenue or an expense, be kept separate on a ledger so that at the end of the season or the end of the year, we can determine actually what money came in and went out, specifically short-term rentals. I'm not suggesting, um, for instance, uh, Sean had said previously that, uh, registration monies went into the general fund.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for him to keep them all in one spot. I just want accounting of it so that when we, uh, the task force looks, has good data to look at, I just want it, just numbers on a page, um, not necessarily where it goes, just an accounting of it.
So we can make some decisions next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. I do wanna note that the, uh, town solicitor recused from this, uh, a council clerk. Town clerk. Okay.
So I have a question for Tom.
Yes.
Can you, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
So you're, you're saying all revenue that comes in, you're talking the 1% that we get back from the state as well?
Yep.
That all should go in?
Just put it on the paper.
One, one account.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Um, Bill, um, Wendy, we, we, do we need a motion for that or? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that.
Mr. President, this is gonna get into financials, though. I need to, I was just looking at the revenue.
Okay. Okay. Just note that, uh, because, because of discussions heading in the financial direction potentially, that, uh, Counsel Toronto's, uh, decided to recuse himself. Okay. Uh, sorry, uh, Vice President.
No, that's fine. So I would like to make a motion to ask the town administrator to keep a separate ledger for all income and expenses related to short-term rentals for the upcoming year.
Second.
Okay. I think it's a good, uh, good move so that we can certainly, we'll have solid information, solid financials, um, so that we can make some of the, uh, you know, decisions, uh, or at least discuss some of the things that we discussed earlier. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Thank you, uh, Count, uh, Mr. Vice President. Okay. I like this one. Number 32, memorandum of Vice President Welch, in reference to a seventh inning stretch.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
We have a motion in a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Counsel Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so basically what I'm asking for is, um, personally, I never sit down this long, ever. Um, I don't know how you do it, but to sit here from 6 o'clock till 10:30 is absurd, I think, for a number of reasons. One, uh, you might need to go to the bathroom. Two, um, I don't know how you're not cramping up and/or keeping mentally sharp. So, uh, whatever comes to us at, at 10:15, we certainly can't be on our A-game as we were when we came in the door. So I just am throwing out there at 8:30, I wanted a 10-minute break. Uh, for people at home, people are Zoom, us, just to get up and walk around the building and, and sit back down. Now, I've, I've heard a little flack from some of the senior counselors, uh, trying to, trying to beat me down on the 10 minutes and, and whether or not it's necessary. And they have, they have relevant points. Uh, one of them, Mr. Santos is trying to negotiate, uh, five minutes if we only start at seven versus, you know, 10 minutes if we start at six. Uh, Mr. Von Villas brought up a good point, too. Even tonight with, uh, the number, I don't know what, how many there are on the agenda, but we're, we're mov- we're picking up speed here. We're moving up, we're moving well. So, um, the suggestion was that maybe I hold off on this, and if we get on a better track and we're out of here at 9:30, uh, maybe it's not necessary. So, um, having heard both of those, and, and they have merit, I think I'm gonna stick to my guns here. Um, I want 10 minutes, and however, I will absolutely agree that if we start to consistently knock some time off the meeting, that maybe it isn't necessary. And I will, whatever you do, reverse motion it, take it out.
Okay. So I think just, um, and I'll refer to the solicitor, but for me, just listening, I think it's a good idea. Um, sometimes when you're running a meeting and you gotta go to the bathroom, you can't unless you take a, a recess, and I'm no different than you or anybody else. I don't cringe or creak like you yet. Um, however, um, just kidding. However, um, um, I, I do think it's a good idea, and I think, I'm not sure you really need, I think we can just do it meeting by meeting and say, motion to recess for 10 minutes, uh, unless you wanna make it part of rule of the council.
No, I don't wanna do that. All I want, uh, because I, quite honestly, I mean, if, if somebody has to go to the bathroom, you gotta pick a time to get it. Now, you can't, but if I wanna go to the bathroom, who am I gonna choose that I'm not gonna listen to while I go to the bathroom? That's not fair.
Understood.
That's not right.
Understood.
So, um, I'm, I'm good with that. I didn't know if legally, you couldn't just stop the meeting without some legalese.
No, we can, you can motion to, to, to recess at any time you wish.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you. I wonder if it would be a thought to, because we have different start times, to simply say, two hours after we start, we'll take a five or 10-minute break, whatever it is, or just a break and leave it open.
And, and obviously, it would be, you know, you, 8:30, I just threw out there, but.
Yeah.
Whenever it made sense in the doc, when we get close and somebody can raise a hand, that'll be that.
Yeah, I think 8:30 is a good time, or whenever a council feels, hey, you know what? Uh, guys, can we take a break? Sure. Just motion to recess, and I don't think there'll be a problem with that. I, I think we'd all welcome that.
He asked for time for when I went out.
He did?
Yeah. How many? Six minutes?
Six and a half minutes, and no one was in front of you. So I'm just trying to tell you.
The only thing.
Someone's been in the bathroom. It would've been all over.
The only thing I'd be cognizant of is sometimes, you know, it's a, it's good to have a break, but sometimes, you know, we get past that. So if I get a little aggressive as far as, hey, let's go, let's, don't take it offensive, it's just trying to stay on track. Because sometimes that 10 minutes can be 15 minutes or 20, you know? And that would be on me at that point, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. Fair enough, everybody? Okay. All right. Is the next docket item gonna request Sweet Caroline at, at, uh, 9 o'clock or what?
I don't like baseball. I wanted to make a NASCAR, but I knew you'd all look at me like I was talking Greek.
All right. I'm just kidding. Okay, so let's move on to number 33, uh, memorandum of town planner in reference to in, engineer contract amendment number five, Purgatory Road sidewalk design.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to receive, um, discussion. So again, this is what we were talking about earlier, um, that, um, you know, I guess, uh, the, the engineer, um, is going to, is looking for a change order, uh, in total of $42,600 for base mapping property lines to see where, um, the, the town lines are and private property are. And we're talking in reference to the sidewalks on, on, uh, Purgatory, uh, base mapping the inverts, uh, for drainage purposes. The majority of the money is base mapping the, the property lines at 35,000 of the 42,600. Uh, project management, additional meetings required, 1,600. Um, the CE checklist, uh, narrative and DRI, DOT coordination's another 4,000, and, uh, direct expense, I'm not quite sure what that is, for $250. Um, so that's, that's what we're looking to do here in the next step, uh, uh, for the sidewalks on Purgatory. So, discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn?
Thank you. Do we know what the funding source will be for this 42,000?
I believe it's a special rev-, uh, special, I highlighted it. It's, uh, it's in the resolution where it says, be it further resolved that the funding for the engineering contract for this sidewalk design is. where it says, be it further resolved that the funding for the engineering contract for this sidewalk design is from the capital improvement program special revenue fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further conversation? Okay. Uh we have a motion and a second uh to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and number thirty four is the resolution of the council in reference to engineer contract amendment number five, purgatory road sidewalk design.
Motion to pass said resolution.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Uh number thirty five memorandum of finance director in reference to solid waste and recycling services agreement, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corp. for the fiscal year uh FY twenty twenty two to um twenty twenty three.
Motion to receive said memorandum, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um I know Mark's on, I'm gonna do the best I can to uh talk about this. Uh uh we, it looks like we're gonna re-up with uh uh Rhode Island um um Resource Recovery for the solid waste and recycling services agreement for the fiscal year twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. The current uh per ton fee for municipal solid waste is forty seven dollars. Um that's been locked in for uh twenty twenty two. Uh however, that will increase to fifty four from forty seven dollars per ton to fifty four dollars per ton in twenty twenty three. So the total increase based upon uh municipal solid waste is about twenty one thousand dollars, going from forty seven dollars to uh fifty three dollars. The current eighty dollars per ton over the cap fee will increase to ninety. Um we don't uh, we've never gone over the cap. Um so therefore, we continue to encourage uh really good recycling uh best practices. And um and I know Will and and his team are on top of that. Mark, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, the only thing that uh, I don't know if you want to add anything to this or not, but uh I, as I was reading through this, I I I know that there's a uh, there's a um, a one and a half percent discount if we pay on time or within um, uh we need to ensure early payment is made in full within twenty days of the uh invoice date. That brings the town balance to zero. We would save a percent and a half. So, you know.
Yes, we currently do pay on time and we do receive that discount.
Excellent. So is there anything, Mark, that I missed that you'd like to add on this uh for for discussion for our councils and residents?
Just the deadline is June thirtieth uh for the current contract, and we have to let them know and have a signed agreement by then. And um I would say you covered everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn.
Uh just a clarification, because there was some confusion amongst the population. This is the agreement regarding our recycling and the fees that we pay for the corporation to to take the recycling and process it. This is not the trash pickup service of the town, correct?
So, no, this includes solid waste.
So it is both the service and the disposal of the recycling?
No, it's actually, this is the, this is not the collection, this is the disposal.
Yeah.
So this is the, this is what we pay for the, to dispose of it at the landfill. This is not the the fee with, I think, Republic Services.
Yeah, it's a separate contract.
Is the hauler that collects and then delivers this to the land.
I I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh Vice President.
Just a question for Mark. If uh the cost to dump per ton goes up, it also said that the cost for the pay at the sticker and bags will remain the same. Why don't we cheat that up a little bit to cover the overage?
That's a separate contract. Sorry, Mark.
No, I I know it's a separate contract, but it's a, it's, it's still as, if you look at trash, you don't get a a separate bill. The only way that I I pay is I pay for my sticker and I pay for the bags. So it is trash, whether it's
Okay.
the truck or the landfill. So it's a legitimate, you know, a legitimate cost increase on the town side. Why doesn't that go to the participants?
It it could. It'll go. I think uh I I would, I would, I would ask council to, it's a good idea. I would ask that we really think this through. Anytime that we've raised uh rates, we've lost participation, um which means we've lost in total revenue to cover the the contract just from Republic. So um I I I understand costs rise and they pass on. You know, one of the things we've tried to do with that uh refuse and recycling fund was to, when we started that, it wasn't self sufficient. But but it has become that over the last few years. And um, you know, what we've done in the past was, once we've built enough, enough of a, of a I don't want to say rainy day fund in there, but enough of a surplus in there. We've actually tried to lower the user fee. A hundred and forty one dollars was a hundred and fifty some at one time. And it went to one forty six and down to one forty one. Just to try and encourage more participation, because right from the get go, when that company out of Vermont presented this in two thousand six or two thousand seven, it was all about the numbers of participants. So I I understand what you're saying.
Nope.
And I don't disagree with that. I just think we need to really think that through, because in the past, um as we lowered the fee, once we built our surplus, we got more participants. So.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Mark a question. When is the contract for the trash pickup going to be coming up?
It expires June of twenty two, so at the fiscal year twenty three budget.
Mark, can you, can you just speak a little louder, please?
We have one more year left on that contract, so it will be June of twenty three, uh the twenty three budget, so June of twenty two.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Very good.
You're welcome.
And and don't forget, some of that was too, when we first started the program, the the only one that bid on it, I believe, was Waste Management at the time, who was predominant hauler around here. And at that time, it was a new program that nobody around here had, so it was more of a risk. So the the price was higher. And as um the second bid came in, it was Republic, second to third one, Republic came in, and it significantly dropped uh when the little competition showed up. So that also helped us to be able to to lower the price. So and make it self sufficient. Okay, so we have uh any further discussion on this? We have a motion and a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Number thirty six, resolution of the council in reference to solid waste and recycling services agreement, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corp. FY twenty twenty two to FY twenty twenty three.
Motion to pass said resolution, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any to pass the said resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody oppose? Excellent, thank you. Number thirty seven memorandum of town administrator in reference to zoning enforcement officer.
Motion to receive said memorandum, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive. Discussion. Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn.
I I wasn't sure if somebody was speaking or not. Some of the microphones aren't picking up the the audio. So I I, you know, uh this is from the town administrator. Uh, you know, I think there's a a lot of discussion, you know, that he was going to give in detail. And uh I'm not sure if he's left that with um Chief Cure or um if he's left any additional detail. And I think there's some questions outstanding on this. I'm wondering if we should continue until he returns.
Okay. What's the, what's the plot? Chief, are you prepared to?
So what I can tell you is that from the town administrator's point of view, he's been meeting weekly with the department heads to look at all short term rental remedies and best practices. He has just requested, obviously, with all the attention on short term rentals, to hiring a part time zoning enforcement officer. So I would recommend, again, to defer to Mr. Brown to give you some particulars in regards to further justification for this position. But I can tell you that from his standpoint, it's 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 well justified for the need uh to have a short term rental, at least a part time officer. So.
Yep, okay. Any further discussion? We do have uh someone that would like to speak. Uh Michael Cunningham. Mike, can you raise your hand, please? Just your name and address for the record, sir.
Michael Cunningham, for the third time tonight, twenty one Holston Avenue, Middletown. Um this, I think I've never spoken three times in one night. Um the uh lucky me. So um this is something that we've all spoke, you know, spoke about for years now. Um and we've gone back and forth on on the needs. You know, we've looked at the town. Um, you know, the the department heads, the departments themselves, working in a part time nature themselves, trying to enforce what is becoming a a very difficult uh set of standards. On the, I wanted to call attention specifically uh and and make the strongest recommendation I can. This needs to be a full time effort. And I feel very strongly that if we go part time on this, it, we are literally kicking our can, the can down the road again. Uh it'll be another frustrating year. And in addition to that, the data that will come out of it will also be equally flawed because it's, there's just so much data to gather that without someone dedicated to this, we're, you know, what I just said, we're gonna have a very difficult time. But I wanted to point out to the town that right now, short term rentals, there are four distinct potential revenue sources from short term rentals. Um and three of them are happening right now. One of them is the registration fee. The other one is the, is fines, if we should start to collect them. The other is derivative property improvement tax revenues, which I'll explain. And the fourth, which we don't do, and I'm not suggesting one way or another, but it's always possible, is a per night rental tax. Leaving that off the table, the derivative property improvement tax revenues is something that when when a decent amount of analysis was done on on the increases, not of the land value, but the properties themselves. And looking at buildings that used to be worth a a property improvement of a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, the building, those buildings are now assessed at eight hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. And that is money that we've been receiving for the last few years, just hidden within the normal tax rules. As was brought up earlier this this evening, we don't really, you know, George said, we don't really track that, what the use of that property is, just that it's a single family property. So already, the town is is easily collecting, and I've got the data, I, in fact, I think I've sent some of it in, on a probably a million dollars of revenue because of short term rentals, which is actually a very, you know, it's something that we 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 gripe about them, but we're collecting a lot of money just in the property taxes alone. So between that, between additional registrations, maybe as many as two hundred registrations for non registered short term rentals, and a little bit more enforcement, hopefully diminishing returns on fines, a lot now, less next year, hopefully none the following year. Um there's a lot of money in the bu, that that's already in the town to reinvest some of this into the town and hire somebody that's available all the time, can alleviate all the other departments on and coordinate that activity on between the departments. And then finally, be an advocate for the short term rental owners themselves, who can ask questions of this person, try and figure out the rules and regulations, and have a proactive and a reactive relationship. So um we were almost here before. I I think we're here now. Um and I I just, I really think a full time person is going to really solve a lot of the problems we have as a community. Certainly, it's a great step. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh okay, thank you, Michael. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Flynn.
If if we're gonna continue it, that's fine. I can hold my questions. Uh so I guess that's my first question. Is this gonna be continued for uh Mr. Brown, or should we ask some questions?
Okay. Um Mrs. Von Villas.
Well, I was going to say that um Mr. Brown is recommending a part time person. But I hear what Mrs. Flynn is saying, that we should hold it over and let him have the part of the discussion.
Okay. Mrs. Santos?
Well, on the paper here, it says to authorize the administration to hire a part time zoning enforcement officer. So it's already on here.
Well, that that's, that's just a potential motion.
All right.
That's all that is.
All right, so we wait until Mr. Brown. So we carry it over?
Yeah.
Motion to continue.
Okay. Any co, any further conversation? No? Okay. Um so we're gonna, uh there's a motion to continue to the made in May third. Um in fairness, that Mr. Brown can present his uh, his, his reasonings as.
Not only that, he has to decide where he's gonna get the money, too. So I mean.
Right, right. So and to where the funding source would come from. So having said that, uh we have a motion and a second to to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We have a second addendum item that we need a motion to be able to add this, because it came in um late, okay?
Motion to add the following item under number seventy thirty seven A to extend the state of emergency in Middletown through and including May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, due to the current extension ending at midnight tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to extend um the state of.
It's to add.
To add, sorry.
Add it to the.
To add it. Uh because it was an oversight um with with, you know, recent events that's uh that's happened uh with Sean. So it was an oversight, so we needed to add this because it ends um tonight at midnight. So a motion and a second to add. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Under Town Administrator thirty seven A, Executive Order twenty twenty one dash oh four, Extension of State of Emergency in Middletown through and including May seventeenth, twenty twenty one.
Motion to extend the state of emergency in Middletown through and including May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, second.
We have a motion and a second to extend the state of emergency through May seventeen, twenty twenty one. And as long as Town Hall is open, I'll support it, which it is. So any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. uh Council of Toronto.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the concerns was if this expired, then the restaurants would not have the ability, or they'd be, they wouldn't be compliant in regards to having outdoor dining. Okay, so I think we need to consider this going forward, that when we come out of this executive session, are we gonna continue to allow restaurants to have outdoor dining? I know the state's talking about it as something, but if we did want to continue after we're out of the executive orders, they would have to change.
You would have to change the zoning. Right now, the way, the way the executive order that allowed the outdoor dining is, it allows the restaurants to basically be at their original capacity in a combination of indoor and outdoor. So as the indoor capacity increases eventually, and they get back to a hundred percent, then that extra capacity that they were granted during the emergency would go away. So i- if you wanted to um allow ex- expanded outdoor dining af, you know, after the pandemic is over, then that would be revisions to the zoning code or other things that you'd want to consider.
But you have to be cautious with that as well, because of the parking issues uh required per per table or per person. So I know the intention's good. I had the same thought a while back, Dennis, and because that's really the only reason that this, in my opinion, gets extended, because you want to make sure that your businesses stay in business and you're doing everything you can to help them. However, when it ends, as Peter uh said, as the indoor capacity continues to expand, if it gets back to full capacity at some point, and we go ahead and change an ordinance, you know, there could be some unintended consequences there as far as parking, create some, some other issues that.
And and one thing to consider right now, um you've got outdoor capacity, but it's fairly limited, because there's a lot of people who won't, who don't want to go to a restaurant now and don't want to dine out. If 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 there were no restrictions and and you got a lot of people in those outdoor spaces, there may be, as you said, there might be unintended consequences. So you just need to be careful.
Yeah.
Review it.
That's, I just wanted to put it out there for discussion.
Okay, no problem. I appreciate it. So we have a motion to, in a second, to extend the state of emergency in Middletown through and include May seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Any further discussion? Mrs. Santos?
Before I left the house tonight, I had two phone calls regarding Town Hall opening. When are we going to allow residents who don't have computers? When are we going to allow residents who don't have computers, who don't have internet, or don't have anything, the seniors, want to come in and visit, not visit, attend the council meetings? Oh, no, not, not.
I'm not sure, we'd have to be in compliance with the state regulations as far as COVID guidelines the state has.
They understand that, but restaurants are open, grocery stores are open, you go to Home Depot, you go everywhere. You could, all right, space, you're talking.
We would have to potentially, dependent upon, you know, when the guidelines expand, then we could potentially go to a bigger place, maybe the school cafeteria, but even then, I don't think you want people in the school that, you know, so.
So what do you want me to go back and tell these people?
We have to follow the state guidelines. We have to, what is it, Peter?
They can have my seat, I'll stay home.
Careful what you wish for. All right. Just kidding, Peter. So, yeah, we just need to continue to follow the guidelines until they're relaxed a little bit. Where, just like the restaurant says, the indoor capacity can expand. I'm sure our indoor capacity will expand at times, too.
And also, the increase in vaccinations and everything is gonna make herd.
Yes. Herd immunity. Yes, ma'am. So having said that, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to extend, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Boards and Committees, number thirty-eight, and this is the one we've all been waiting for tonight. Memorandum of Counsel Santos in reference to resignation as liaison to the Middletown School Committee and as liaison to the Beach Commission. With regret, I'll add. We have a motion and a second to receive said resignation with regret. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What I would ask is, I would ask if the councils are agreeable to this, I would ask Counsel Logan to consider filling those vacancies. I think that may be the easiest thing to do, I don't know what your schedule is.
So as I understand it, there are a number of vacancies that have to be looked at again.
Okay.
So we may want to bring that up as an item.
Awesome, that's what we'll do.
Or we can take it off.
Great idea.
Whatever, but I think we need to address that in totality.
Okay, no problem. Good idea, so. How about that?
Oh, awesome.
Awesome, all right. Listen, motion to adjourn, we have a motion and a second. I want to thank everybody for this evening. Chris, welcome again. Bill, thank you for filling in. Good job, everybody, and let's move forward on these issues and get things done, okay? I appreciate your patience with me. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.